2014 System Oversight Meeting of the Prince George's County Board of Education. This afternoon, we would be discussing the School Systems Business Management Services and reviewing a presentation provided by the Division of Supporting Services on Safety, Food and Nutrition and Transportation Services. We have quite a great group of folks here, particularly for daytime meeting. I like the daytime meetings where we come and have so many of our staff who work hard for us every day. Welcome. We're glad you can be with us today, and I would imagine if you weren't here, you'd be at the office working really hard, so it could be worse than being here. So, thank you so much for being here. As always, turn off your wireless devices so that they don't ring in the middle of the meeting, and we'll now move on and have Ms. Higgins please to lead us. Is Ms. Higgins not here yet? How about you, Mr. Burrows? Would you mind leading us in the board prayer and pledge of allegiance?
Sure. "O God, we pray to administer that which is just, and all educational policies be an ever mindful of your guidance, stir us to action with love, wisdom, and understanding." Amen.
[Inaudible]
Mrs. Barker, would you please call the roll?
Thank you. Dr. Anderson. Mr. Burrows.
Present.
Ms. Epps. Ms. Eubanks.
Present.
Ms. Higgins. Ms. Jacobs. Dr. Kaufman. Ms. Monday. Here. Mr. Valentine.
Here.
Ms. Waller. Ms. Williams.
Present.
Ms. Musaria.
Present.
Ms. Boston.
Present.
Dr. Eubanks.
Present.
Thank you.
All right, colleagues. Prior to the adoption of the agenda, I guess I got to note under governance, unfinished business 10.2, public charter school approval of facility use agreement for the operations of Imagine Leland Public Charter School at Berkshire Elementary School was removed from the agenda and then subsequently placed back on the agenda for good news reasons, which I'll get back to when we get to that point. Given that, may I please have a motion to adopt the April 10, 2014 System Oversight Meeting Agenda as amended?
Moved.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? We have adopted the agenda. Colleagues, may I please have a motion to approve the March 27, 2014 Board Meeting Minutes? So moved.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Great. Now, before we go on with the remainder of the agenda, just a couple of quick things we don't do on these Systems Oversight Meetings. We don't have a Chair's Report or a CEO's Report, and in fact, Dr. Maxwell cannot be with us today because he is at an all-day session, I think at the University of Maryland or something like that. Howard. Howard. At Howard University. But he did want me, particularly, you know, last week was a big week for us in both good news and challenges. We were visited at Bladensburg High School by President Barack Obama, who delivered that. That in and of itself was exciting. The fact that he was there to deliver the news that in partnership with the Prince George's Economic Development Corporation and several other great partners, we were awarded a $7 million grant to help to promote workforce development in our three high schools in the Transforming Neighborhood Initiatives, Bladensburg, Potomac, and Fairmont Heights. Yes, that does deserve a round of applause. In fact, ladies and gentlemen... So, in the midst of that good news, things happen in a school district our size and in the complexity that we have. And of course, in the midst of that, we had the tragedy of a bus accident that involved the injury of several students whom, if you have not yet heard, all of whom are home and recovering. Thank God for that, that there were no significant issues. So, but in the midst of that, Dr. Maxwell asked me explicitly to thank Max Pugh, Monique Bailey, Monica Goldson, as well as Clarence Stooks and the transportation staff and all of the staff who worked so tirelessly on...God, what day was that already? It feels like Monday?
Monday.
This week? Wow. On Monday, in order to both look at the ways in which we are moving to be great by choice and we are handling the challenges and tragedies that happen with us with professionalism and with a great deal of vigor to ensure that we keep our students and their families safe. So, thank you all for that work. Absolutely. All right. Now, where am I? Oh, public comment. There are no public comment on agenda items this afternoon. There are no legislative reports this afternoon. So, we're on to item 6.0, System Oversight Discussion. We will go to item 6.1, Business Management. I will now yield the floor to Dr. Davis, I would assume, for an introduction to item 6.1, Business Management Services.
Thank you, Dr. Eubanks. Good afternoon, all. Our system oversight agenda includes an overview of the Business Management Services Division and several departments within the Division of Supporting Services, which include Safety, Food and Nutrition Services, and Transportation. Mr. Thomas Sheeran, Acting Chief Financial Officer, and his staff will provide an overview of item 6.1, and Mr. Clarence Stooks, Chief of Supporting Services, and his staff will provide an overview of item 6.2.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. Chairman Eubanks, Vice Chairman Boston, Board Members, Executive Team, and guests. I have the distinct pleasure to have a little brief presentation on the Business Management Services Division. And I have a team with me today who will provide a good overview. The services that we deliver, they cover a lot of the administrative functions, whether it be fiscal compliance or budget, accounting, payroll, purchasing, and risk management, as well as others. And so, I'd like to start off by introducing the team. If they would stand. I have Kristi Miller, who's the Fiscal Performance Officer. I have Dr. Colby White, who's Director of Budget and Management Services. Vittorio Weeks, he's the Accounting and Financial Reporting Officer for the Finance and Treasury Services Division. Teresa Bernstein is Supervisor of Systems and Analysis for the Payroll and Benefit Services Unit. Brenda Allen is Director for Purchasing and Supply Services, and Mr. Philip Hughes, Manager of Risk Management and Workers' Compensation. This team of dedicated professionals would just like to spend a few minutes today going over their functional areas, and I think when you see the depth and the scope of the kinds of activities and the functions and the services they deliver, you can see that why we keep students first, student achievement first, and customer service first. And with that, I'd like to bring up Kristi Miller.
As you know, we serve many, I don't know, serve many roles and answer to many people. Every acronym I can probably think of is listed up there. So, we report internally, we report to county government, state government, federal, our grantors. So, this is what governs and directs a lot of the work that we do on a day-to-day basis. Within fiscal compliance, as many of you know, in late February, one example of the work that we do is the report that we received at the end of February from the Office of Legislative Affairs with our 23 findings. We are happy to report that we have corrective action already underway for 13 of those 23 findings stemming from not only our internal desire to be reflective practitioners and to hopefully save some money and return it back to the classroom, but also to no longer have repeat findings from the initial OLA audit from six years prior. So, some examples of those would be our inventory initiative, tagging, and even looking into RFID solutions so that we can address more regular inventories of the assets that we do have already on hand, working with information technology to increase our data security and internal and external firewalls and accessibility issues, managing of our sick leave bank so that we're acting in a more fiscally responsible way, and also helping and partnering with solutions that other offices are implementing, for instance, software within operations, which will help us monitor things like deferred maintenance, utility expenses, and work orders. Also this week, actually, we met with the county on some complementary efforts that we are looking forward to, to take on process improvement initiatives that meet our shared interests, also complements internal work that we're already doing in light of OLA, in light of the transition team report, and also just being reflective practitioners within our own departments. And for challenges, it's the really, the really large, system-wide initiatives that need to take place to really drive home efficiencies that affect multiple divisions, multiple departments with some of our complementary services. Also coming out of this office is management of the Student-Based Budgeting Initiative. As you know, the last several months, you've seen FY '15 projections and algorithms over our 14 figures, constantly reflecting and improving that initiative, what we weigh, how we weigh it, what students we look at, how we use student data, and how we really integrate school-based leadership with parents and community members around the budget-building process to support innovation and reflective reflection at the school level, to really figure out what we need to do at each school to drive home value for their individual Challenges associated with our current system is basically assigning weights and finding things that really make a difference across a very diverse geographic in terms of school size, in terms of location. We have a lot of different kinds of schools, different sizes of schools, students with different needs. Just to highlight two of the items that are listed here between FY '14 and FY '15, the district as a whole, within our 181 SBB schools, rose 2,000 students. However, we rose over 3,100 students in students identified as non-English speakers. So, that's a huge portion of our increase in enrollment, coming from students that have more diverse needs, higher cost needs, and more needs in terms of teachers and wraparound services and support at the school level. Additionally, out of those 2,000 students that we gained across the district, 3,100 of them come from a family that falls within our Free and Reduced Meals Program, so they're coming from a background of a challenging socioeconomic background. So, those students also have some additional needs in terms of services that they're going to be requiring at the school level. So, we need to make sure that our funding model is able to meet every student where they are and to make sure that we're allocating dollars in a way that makes sense to really get them what they need. That's the funding chart that you guys have probably already seen. The '15 chart rolls up to 429. The difference is essentially the double basic weight was doubled between '14 and '15. Our English language learners were tweaked a little bit by our work, our ongoing work with the Office, the International Student Office, and also really addressing the small schools allocation to increase resources to the classroom so that schools that are in that situation are actually able to purchase additional classroom positions. We do have approximately 43 of our 181 schools that do qualify under what we categorize as small schools. So, that also continues to be a challenge when you try to look at an equation or at an algorithm that takes in the needs, the unique needs of 181 different schools. That's it for me. Thank you.
Colby White, Acting Budget Director. Thank you for the opportunity to come and to give you a glimpse as to what we actually do within the Budget Office. What you see before you right now is a snapshot of our budgeting process. You've actually seen this before, but what we try to do is that we take pride in working with all our different stakeholders, from the communities to our different colleagues within different departments and divisions within the school district. And that's how we actually developed our baseline or our initiatives for the upcoming budget. In November or December timeframe, we consolidate all that information and develop it into the CEO's proposed document. And throughout the year, we will work closely with the Board of Ed, responding to different questions and concerns, addressing the actual budget development. Within the timeframe of around March the 1st, we actually communicate that to the County Council, the County Executive, their budget team, and their other colleagues over there, also scrutinize what's been developed and proposed and requested by the Board of Education. That process normally runs through May, May-ish, May 15, but by June 1st, they transmit their approved budget to the school district so that we can go through our reconciliation period during the month of June, so that July 1st, we're off and running for a great school year. Our next slide here actually shows some of our performance measures, and I'm not going to go through all of them, but what we are trying to do is to ensure that the work that we're doing daily is placing the school district in a financially stable position. So, if you look at the first one, it talks about the number of budget revisions. So, those budget revisions are communicated from the roots to the top, from the schools, from the departments to our departments, so that we can realign funding based on the day-to-day needs that are transpiring at the frontline levels. If those requests are crossing any categories or moving between any objects, you've seen either monthly reassignments or you see quarterly financial reviews. All of that information is gathered in one of those Board Action summaries that we present to you throughout the actual year. Another one of the matrix that we have is to determine how closely are we projecting the categories when we develop the budget. What that actually is telling us is that if we have to come back and do a lot of revisions or a lot of transfers, it tells us one or two things. The first component is that the, our account managers, our frontline personnel, they're continuously looking at our strategic data to ensure that the school district is moving in the correct direction. The other message that it tells to us is that sometimes we might have to communicate a little more intensely or a little more frequently with our colleagues to ensure that if and when we're developing a budget, we're getting the latest and the most accurate data to ensure that when we set those categories July 1st, there's not a lot of transfer requests or a lot of movement between the actual categories. And another item that I'd like to talk about is the budget development, just being produced and developed on a timely basis. It's critical that we work closely with all our stakeholders, especially the Board, the CEO, and his executive staff, to ensure that by law, we're making these mandated dates on a timely fashion. We don't miss them. We sometimes have to push back hard on our leaders and our different colleagues, but we want to ensure that the school district is always in the best position financially and instructionally so that we can move forward to continue to choose to be great. So, at this point in time, I wanted to turn it over to my colleague, Vito, I believe.
Thanks, Colby. Good afternoon, Board. I'm here to talk about the Finance and Treasury Operations Department within BMS. Finance and Treasury Operations encompasses the controllership responsibility in a typical organization. It involves detailed nuts and bolts, behind-the-scenes transactional work that leads to the preparation of financial statements. Our work involves a large staff of 50 FTEs and a lot of process monitoring. The department covers five areas that we will discuss briefly. The first is Accounting and Financial Reporting. The second, Cash Management and Treasury Operations. The third, Accounts Payable. The fourth, Grants Financial Management. And the fifth, Medicaid Recovery. Although we tend to work in the background, you may be familiar with some of the remarkable, hard-working, and talented individuals who head these five areas. Kathryn Warren is the...Kathryn, if you please? Is the Assistant Treasurer. Esther Bush is the Accounts Payable Manager. Darrell Haley is the Manager of the Grants Financial Management Unit. And Ricardo Smith is the Manager of the Medicaid Recovery Office. Two other managers not here today in accounting, Pam Malahay and Peggy Harrison, make my life much easier. I want to thank all of them and 40-some others who work so hard behind the scenes. As you see in the first slide, in accounting, the final output is our Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, which is part of the external audit process. Accounting also oversees the accounting operations of a number of areas, the school construction area, capital projects, food and nutrition, the special revenue area, our self-insurance and OPEB trust or fiduciary funds, as well as other proprietary funds like before and after and special projects. We also have, as Kristi has mentioned, a close relationship with the County Finance and Treasury Division, MSD, Department of Mental Health of the state, et cetera. In accounting, approximately $20 million flows into the schools and school activity funds. Our emphasis in accounting relates to training, providing proper oversight with the Internal Audit Office. One of the main objectives currently is to try to go cashless because this, the huge amount of cash that exists in the schools presents a particular internal control problem. However, management is concerned about not burdening parents with multiple systems, rather providing one portal for food and nutrition, student activity, and before and after that can be used by all of those. In the area of fixed management, fixed assets management, we have begun asset tagging as a result of the Office of Legislative Audits, as was mentioned earlier, and tried to mimic some of the good work that information technology began in 2011 under Wesley Watts' leadership that involved centralized receiving of assets. We're moving now and exploring the possibility of RFID, which is tagging assets using radio Performance indicators in accounting, we have consistently completed our CAFR on time, although this year, unlike the previous year, we had a material weakness related to analyzing and reconciling capital assets. This involved, and not to be too technical, but issues related to how we account for retinage, use of clearing accounts, and how we, how timely we capitalize working process and take into account asset impairments. Similarly, we have completed the AFRA, the Maryland Annual Financial Report on time, and typically close the books of accounts every month within 10 days and perform reconciliations in a timely manner. Unlike the past, we've begun to work very closely with Dr. White and the Budget Department on variance analysis, where it's now a shared responsibility instead of just compartmentalizing our responsibilities and, as a result, achieving better collaboration. In the area of Treasury Operations, the cash management of the school system is handled in this office. Treasury handles all of our ACHs and wires, does all of our invoicing, whether internal or external parties, provides reports to the Board and the CEO on investment activity and on cash management needs, and handles our cash flow projections. As this slide shows, the invoices, the average number of invoices a month, it's about 30 invoices that I generated, most error-free, and receivables are outstanding, only a small amount are outstanding for more than 60 days. The returns are about four times the average returns expected, although they're still very low at a, under a quarter, about a quarter of a percent. And as a result, we do not generate as much interest income as might have typically been the case, especially since in the past couple of years, almost 40% of the county revenue is received by the school system in the last quarter of the year. In the area of Accounts Payable, approximately $75 million worth of bills are paid each month, and the objective is to pay these invoices in a timely manner within 30 days. In addition, employees are reimbursed for various reimbursable expenses, 1099s are generated for the tax authorities, and ACHs and wires are processed. The Accounts Payable Office has been able to achieve a 97% accurate payment rate with, in FY '13, and the objective is to not only continue this transactional work, but to also improve by utilizing larger degree of accounts payable automation and electronic document management. In our Grants Financial Management Unit, this is a relatively new unit, less than two years, consolidating both accounting and budget functions. This new unit has made a big difference. Under a very experienced manager, it has been able to provide sound fiscal management, make sure that grant funds are spent according to plan. make sure that grant funds are spent according to plan, and provide greater collaboration with program managers. The next move is to try to achieve better process management and using, using automation tools more wisely. The Grants Financial Management Unit also is intimately involved in the preparation and monitoring of the Bridge to Excellence Master Plan. In FY 2013, approximately a twenty, one hundred and twenty-two million dollars of grant funds were budgeted. Approximately ninety-four percent of this amount, one hundred and sixteen million, was actually received and spent during the year. The single audit report revealed three internal control deficiencies, and these revolved around payroll certifications, vendor debarment procedures, and vendor select, selection documentation. Initiatives are in place to ensure that these findings do not repeat in the following year. In our Medicaid Recovery Office, there's, has also been a new, experienced manager brought in from the Head Start Program, and under his leadership, we've had a substantial increase in revenue, whereas in 2012, generated approximately seven-point-seven million. In 2013, this amount rose to approximately eight-point-seven million, and in 2014, we're on track moving to approximately ten million dollars. The office is also implementing a web-based, paperless Medicaid billing system to help improve the claims process. Currently, approximately eighty-five hundred, eight thousand five hundred claims are processed monthly based on almost seven thousand IEPs for students in the school system. Although we do a lot of transaction, transactional work, our objective is to improve processes and make sure that what we do in the background affects student learning. We have, most of our staff are women. Most of them have either been in the school system, have children within the school system, or have intimate relations and real care for what we do. And so we are assured that we will join you, the Board, in making children always first. Thanks.
Good afternoon. Payroll and Benefits Services has recently reached our goal of correct and on-time pay of nearly twenty thousand employees. We work closely with other departments within BMS as well as HR to ensure that we are in compliance with both internal and external laws and regulations. Our timekeepers in the schools and offices are vital to our access, and we communicate with them routinely and provide training so that our services are effective. We meet monthly with our union leaders to discuss employee benefits and leave issues. We administer and monitor the benefits program of our employees and retirees, maintaining competitive rates and options. These benefits include medical, dental, prescription, vision, flexible spending, life insurance, tax shelters, annuities, to name a few. Our time card approval rate is ninety, is in the ninety percent range with nearly two hundred approvers completing this process every pay period. We work to ensure that long-term leave approvals are in line with union and board regulations. And finally, the Payroll and Benefits Services staff endeavor to provide great customer service to all of our customers. We are committed to providing accurate information and address our customers' needs in a prompt and courteous manner. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Brenda Allen. I am the Director of Purchasing and Supply Services, and I'm going to just talk to you briefly about purchasing and some of the exciting things that we are doing or have done in the purchasing department. And all of that would not be possible without the great staff that I have supporting me. So I'd like to introduce the management staff of, of the purchasing department. We have Ms. Janice Mar, who's the purchasing supervisor. We have Jonathan Johnson, who's the supervisor of supply services. And we have Wes Owens, who is the MBE Coordinator for the school system. Purchasing and Supply Services is responsible for all aspects of the procurement process from delivery, from sourcing to delivery, and how it impacts the students, employees, and the community. We have to understand how, what we do impacts employees, but whether they will have what they need on a day-to-day basis to be successful, whether or not the stuff that we deliver students will have so that they can achieve at the highest level, and whether or not we are good stewards of the money that we are spending in, in the public arena. We are to ensure that our process is transparent, open, and that it's conducted in legal, ethical, and professional standards. We use various methods to procure goods and supplies, and one of the ones that we have started to embrace wholeheartedly is leveraging our buying powers through cooperative participation. The state over the last couple of years passed a law that said that school systems and public entities could use cooperative buying to purchase, and we found that it's been very effective for us because it now gives us an opportunity to not only look at the Maryland area, we can look at nation, nationally, where we stand as far as our pricing and getting good quality and getting good goods. So that has been a very good benefit to the school system. The other area that we, that we deal with is minority business, and this is something that is very near and dear to our heart because we're in Prince George's County and we're predominantly African-American. Making sure that we have the right vendors and, and minority vendors who can compete in the arena of the procurement process is very important to us. We are committed to increasing the MBE participation, and we do that through outreach, we do it through training, we do it through networking, and we do it through our open solicitation process as well. We invite vendors in to come in and, and talk to us one-on-one about our MBE program and how they can become vendors with Prince George's County School System. Last, last week, we had a outreach event where we brought vendors in to talk about entering their information into the system, become vendors, and also the compliant piece that, that State of Maryland has put into place on how they must be compliant if they are going to compete and get, do business with Prince George's County. Some of the things that Wes is responsible for is developing partnerships. He developed those partnerships with other jurisdictions, with other county agencies, and with other state agencies. He's also an advocate for our MBE vendors. So if they are having problems with their primes, it is, they come to Wes, and Wes works on their behalf to get their issues resolved with their prime contractors. He develops strategic partnerships where we can go out and actually have these outreach events that we can really look at Maryland and Virginia and DC as a whole to bring in as many vendors as possible so that they can compete here in Prince George's County. Like I said, he conducts workshops. The big piece is the MBE compliance piece. Two years ago, the state mandated that we start tracking how well or how soon and how often the primes are paying their subcontractors. One tool that they've given us in our toolbox is they've added liquidated damages. If primes are not paying the vendors after we pay them within a certain time period, we can assess liquidated damages, damages to that prime contractor, which is a, a very good tool to have when you're trying to build capacity for prime, for subcontractors and trying to get them to do business with Prince George's County. Our MBE goal, for the State of Maryland, there are no MBE goals for consultants or for, for consultants. They do have, MBE goals for construction and maintenance, which is twenty-nine percent. The, the Board's goals are thirty percent. The county's goals for MBE construction and management was just raised to thirty percent. For instructional consultants, like I said, the state doesn't have any goals, but we have a goal of fifteen percent. So we always try to make sure that for any consulting agreements that we go, put into place, that there is some MBE participation with those goals. For materials and supplies across the board, everyone has fifteen percent as their goal. Our MBE, as you can see, this is for the first quarter of two thousand fourteen, of fiscal year 2014. For the amount of money and the number of awards that we have entered into this year, as you can see, that we have definitely, we are thirty-four percent of the awards that we've done in the first quarter, our first and second quarter, thirty-four percent went to MBEs and sixty-eight, twenty-eight percent went, I'm sorry, sixty-six percent went to non-MBEs, which are prime vendors. Out of the forty-five that we awarded, seventeen went to MBEs and twenty-eight went to non-MBE vendors. Overall, this is a breakdown of all the different MBEs that we have entered into contract with. We do have another slide that we do present to you all quarterly that also shows it by locality, so we can show how many of these MBEs are Prince George's County, you know, and other various jurisdictions within this region. Our Supply Services area, that area delivers all of the supplies to the school system. So we have three areas that is actually supported under this. We have the ISSC Warehouse, which delivers all of your school supplies and chemicals and furniture to the school system, and then we have Shop Stewards, which delivers all of the supplies, or manages all the supplies for Building Services Maintenance Department. And then we also have the Mailroom that manages, that delivers and picks up mail throughout the, the school system and also make runs to Baltimore when necessary. Supply Services is committed or charged every day with the hot, to provide the highest quality of customer service. They move products, they not only move products, but we also move people from one place to the, from one place to the next. These are some of our performance goals, and I'm not going to read all of them. I'll just kind of go do just an overview of, overall. And each year, we set a goal on how well we want to, we want to measure how well we are doing in, in providing service to the school system. So we have, well, the MBE goal, we have our Supply Services goal, and then we have the purchasing goal. Purchasing's goal overall was ninety, ninety-six percent for FY13, and FY, and we actually achieved that goal. So in FY14, we've raised it to ninety-seven percent. As of the first two quarters, we are currently at ninety-four percent. And as you can see, we, we deliver, or we create a lot of purchase orders for the school system, and we are on track to probably meet that twenty-eight thousand that we did in FY13. For the Supply Services area, we did have a few little hiccups, but those hiccups usually come when we have to stop delivering supplies and then we have to move people from one place to the next, and we have to make sure that everything's in place for when school opens. So at the, the first two months in the fiscal year, our first three months in the fiscal year is usually dedicated to either moving office equipment, furniture, books, and those things, to those natures into the school system. And then probably about in September or mid-September, we get back into the routine of delivering supplies. So first two months or first two quarters, it gives us, we have to have a little catch-up time to get there because we kind of put that to the side because it's very important that the school's ready first day for our students to, to enter. For Shop Stewards, like I said, they deliver, they manage all the products for Building Services, and they are, last year, they were at eighty-nine percent. This year, they're back on target for ninety-five percent, and they will probably achieve that goal. And with that, I'm bringing up Phil, who's with Risk Management.
Good afternoon. Risk management touches a lot of different aspects in the district. Along with you, what you see here on the slide above, we also are involved in renewing and providing contract language, issuing certificates of self-insurance, and ensuring that our commercial policies are maintained, renewed, and, and kept up to date. We also look to try to find innovative ways to transfer our risk. Along with that, we have oversight of our third-party administrator, and we want, and our goal is to ensure that claims that are filed against the district are handled, are reviewed, handled, and investigated in a timely manner. Recently, we've increased our staff in order to help achieve our goals. We've added a, a loss coordinator and a, and a safety analyst to help us with the analysis of why claims, specifically workers' comp claims, and are involved in the district. We believe through loss prevention, we can reduce the, the workers' comp expenditures that the district endures every year, and we believe through loss prevention, that can be achieved. And, and that is also done through several things, through identification, awareness, and education. We believe, I believe that safety is the responsibility of everyone in the district, and if we take on that responsibility, certainly we can reduce the number of claims that the district receives, receives and deals with every year. Along with that, we are working with our internal partners, Human Resources, Payroll, Absence Management, Human Resources, to streamline our policies and procedures, and it is our goal that, that in turn will provide better customer service for our internal and external clients. From, from the slide above, you can see what our workers' comp and our liability expenditures have been over the last three years going, and including FY14. Certainly, there was a huge bump in FY11 to FY12. We anticipate that based on the averages in FY14, we will come in similar to the twenty million that we spent workers' comp in FY13, and the same with our general liability and all the liability claims. And the final slide shows basically what are, who is having claims. As, as expected, our teachers are involved in the bulk of our workers' comp claims, and a bulk of those are falls. Certainly, falls are prevented, are preventable. We believe that getting out to the, our community, talking to our, our agencies and our schools, determining why falls occur, and then in turn, providing preventive measures will help reduce these, these numbers from FY14 moving forward. Thank you.
Appreciate that, team members. In closing, as you can see, there's a, it's, it's a strong team. It's a solid team. They're dedicated toward the, to providing efficiency and effective services, whether it's, and you heard a lot of the things that we're doing new, whether it's implementing, we just had the direct deposit plan put in place, and that's been a pretty good success. And we're looking at the, the increases in Medicaid recoveries, and we're looking at the, the possibility of instituting a centralized receiving for all of our, all of the goods and goods that we receive. And, and, and in budget process, the SBB process is being strengthened. The, the fund balance is, is strengthening, so the stability of the school system's growing. So the long and short of it is that we have a strong team in place to, to support what's happening in the classroom, and we're, at this point, we're happy to take any questions the Board might have.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for that great presentation. And Board members, I will now yield the floor to questions. I have on my list so far Dr. Anderson and Ms. Boston. Folks who have questions or comments, please do buzz in for me. Dr. Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I want to commend you, Mrs. Sharon, and your team for the very comprehensive report you've presented and the timeliness of it. I do have a few questions. One on Slide nine.
Yes, ma'am. That's the budget calendar?
Yes, the calendar. And I was wondering if you could insert in the calendar, consider inserting in the calendar, some opportunity for the Board to have input with the CEO on setting priorities. Some Board input maybe prior to the time that the, that the, that the priorities are set by the administration and staff. Some time for the Board to meet, to have input in the setting of priorities.
We will definitely take that under consideration, but I would just like to point out that the administration definitely is in tune with what the Board is always conveying to us, and so we- to us, and so we, we can put a, a item on here that says that we will meet with you all officially, but when we are meeting with you all, every Thursday is a different emails and different requests that we get. It's not just a, a formal, we want to sit down and, and talk to you. We hear, we hear your concerns, we hear the direction and the vision that all our leadership is asking us to adhere to. So we can definitely put something on there officially, but it's just not in the months of September and October that that communication.
And I didn't mean for that, just, you know, initially, say I have some conversation.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And then I have questions regarding the MBE program, and I guess they start on twenty-seven, but in particular, thirty and thirty-one. And it is in how we, we monitor the vendors. And I was wondering when we, excuse me, when we monitor and report, do we monitor according to the major vendor, or do we look at subcontractors as well?
We have to do both. Before, before a contract goes out, before we even put it, solicitation, we have to set the goals. And when the vendors bring their proposals back in, we have to look at those goals to see if they have met the goals that we've put out. And then through the course of the project, we have to monitor to make sure that they're meeting those goals.
Okay, would it be too difficult for your reporting to include breakdown according to major contractors?
Yeah, yes. So you want the prime as well as the sub?
Absolutely. See just how the distribution looks.
Sure, we can do that.
And, and, and then I want to know if slide thirty is related to slide thirty-one.
Yes, slide thirty is like the, the overall, slide thirty-one is really just the breakdown of the different ethnicities, ethnicities on how the money has been distributed, or how the awards have been awarded.
And maybe I just made a mistake in the calculations, but they don't seem to work. You know, when you add up the amount of monies that have gone to MBEs, I think we get a little over thirty, a lot over thirty-seven million, and one slide shows thirty-seven million plus in another. When you look at the breakdown, I think it's over there.
Yeah, we'll take a look at it. Yeah, this may be, I mean, it's a component of, these are just two out of probably about five that we have.
So I was looking at the caption, you know, because we say first and second quarters, and the, the numbers are just not.
Yeah, so we can make sure that this is the first and second quarter, not the FY thirteen.
Okay, all right, so we could, all right. Well, I, I thank you very much, and I'm so glad that we had the calendar ahead of time so we could plan how to interface.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Boston.
On slide thirty, I think thirty-seven, when we're looking at the risk management and workers' comp, and this, on these FY dates, when is the start and end date of those? Because I noticed in two thousand fourteen, you have an asterisk beside that, and it said that was ending in February the twenty-eighth. So when was the start of that?
The start of every fiscal year is July first. The FY fourteen just run from, we ran a report from July first to the end of February.
So that's not a full year?
No, ma'am, the full year will end June thirtieth.
Yeah, I, I'm just concerned because the numbers, the way they're looking at, look like we, our cases are going to, our claims are going to really increase if we do a full, you know, when we do that full-year report.
Well, based on the, based on the, based on the averages of the, we're averaging about a hundred and thirty-two claims a month, so we'll run about fourteen fifty. We're running about one point seven million dollars a month in, in spend, so that'll, that'll possibly give us to where about twenty-some million dollars, maybe a little bit above for the end of the, of the end of this fiscal year. Now, certainly, those, those could change because weather events probably did increase our numbers this fiscal year, so as the weather is getting warmer, we should have less occurrences.
Right, because we had a, a substantial increase in twenty thirteen of claims, so what, what do you attribute to twenty thirteen when it wasn't, the weather wasn't a factor of the increase?
Well, ma'am, I think that what, what we're having, I think it's a, it's a couple things. One, that, you know, we do not, we did not, or will, did not at the time have an effective loss prevention measure. So claims that were being reported, certainly, we did not take a historical look to see why those claims were reported, and, and then in turn, putting measures to try to prevent them. We are collaborating with the Safety Department, and we will be going out to these schools and agencies, talking to folks, both for the, for the agencies and departments that have high frequency to determine what is causing them, but also going out to agencies and schools that have low frequency and find out from them what's working well with them, and, and that's a part of our educational process, and then, you know, finding budgetary means in order to put things in place to try to prevent these losses for, for recurring.
Okay, I would like to see you to share that report with the board when you, you complete that to see, you know, what is causing our numbers to, claims to go up as much as they are.
Yes, ma'am.
Give a report to the board. Also, we've heard from quite a few employees who, you know, when they get injured and they, their doctors say they can return to work, but they need light duties, and we hear from quite a few employees saying that when they apply for light duty, they're, they're told that there is no light duty, or they don't have other, you know, work for them. I mean, are we trying to do a better job of trying to place those individuals that are capable of working, they're just not capable of going back to that type of work that, you know, where they, you know, first got that injury?
The answer to that question is yes. Certainly, we have a transitional work duty program in place, but we are, we are trying to expand that program to ensure that individuals who are able to come back to work but have some restrictions, we can find places for them. It is difficult depending on the occupation and depending on the restriction to place people, but certainly, I believe there's, that's an area of opportunity for us to make sure that people who want to come back to work, who is willing to come back to work, will find that we have a place for them to come back to work, because certainly statistics show that the longer people are out due to a workers' comp injury, the longer they will stay out.
Right, thank you.
You're quite welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Burles, then I got Valentine, Williams, and Higgins.
I think my colleagues have already stated, thank you, Tom, for all the work that you do and your staff each and every day on behalf of the school district. I do have a few questions. My first question is around change orders. You know, I think we're making progress in limiting the amount of change orders that occur, but, you know, we still have repeat offenders, and so what are you doing to ensure that we, you know, contract with businesses that are ethical and that are not trying to take all of our money?
You've, you've touched on a, on a pretty good point, and I, I don't think this will be the last time we talk about change orders. Primarily, I think one of the, one of the factors is, and I'm not the first one to say this, but we have, I, I think it's in excess of three billion dollars worth of deferred maintenance, which really means that for every day that passes, our infrastructure's getting weaker. And I think that when, and I'd be more than happy to have Clarence and his, his team speak to it, but, you know, generally, when, when, when there's a, a construction project, and it gets evaluated both internally and then, and primarily internally, when you're looking at the, the specs of what the, of what the scope of the work is going to be, you're making a professional best estimate.
Right.
And sometimes I think that estimate's low, because if, if you're going to tear out a wall and you, and you find that what you thought was going to be a hundred thousand dollar job, but the infrastructure behind the wall that's also associated with other part of, you know, perhaps a cooling set of lines, is also deteriorated, you know, unbeknownst to both the Facilities Department as well as the Capital Projects Group, is all of a sudden, what, what we initially thought was a hundred thousand dollars is now a hundred and fifty. So you really only have, the administrative, you only really have one choice, you have to fix it, and now it's a, it's a hundred and fifty thousand dollar job. And I don't, I don't want to try to simplify it, but I think it's a, it's a problem of our infrastructure.
No, I hear you, but, you know, in several cases, it's not exactly that, it's a contractor will underbid, will accept the contract, and then in the eleventh hour, the contractor will add an additional expense. That's pretty common sense, that should have been included in the primary bid and primary contract.
I think, I think probably the best, the best approach to overall board concerns about change orders is that, you know, as we, as we get into the, into the summer months and through the spring, when we have, when we have an opportunity for the Finance Audit and Budget Committee, that we can have some sort of a workshop approach to, to the change order process, and that way, the board can get to an in-depth level of, of the different kinds of examples, the different underlying assumptions, and hopefully create a better comfort level for the board.
Yeah, thank you, I think, I think that'd be great. Like I said, you guys have made progress. I know this is an issue that you've worked very hard on, Ms. Golson is working very hard on to address, and so you make, you're making progress. Just want to make sure that we continue to move along that path. And then similarly to Dr. Anderson, I have a question around minority business. And, you know, minority business is a broad category that encompasses almost everybody, right? And so, but it's important to me as, you know, someone who lives in Prince George's, that we invest in our community, and so I would like to partner, I don't know if it's with Tom or someone in your office, in really creating a framework for community, you know, you know, maybe we can partner together to host workshops, you know, and the county maybe twice a year, to really educate the community on, you know, so what is it, you know, what does it look like to be competitive for a contract in P2CPS? You know, what does it look like to work with a major contractor if you're, you know, only capable of handling a, you know, a smaller contract? But I, you know, would love to work with your office and the community engagement piece if, is that something that, you know, we're all open to? Yes, great. And then the last, on slide thirty-two, an issue that I know Ms. Higgins is working on, I'm working on, and I know Ms. Golson is, you know, making progress in investigating, and that goes to custodial supplies. And so I've heard, you know, time and time again, that we've had custodians who've had to purchase, you know, supplies out of their own personal accounts, and they may or may not be, you know, reimbursed for the, for the expense. And so if I'm, based on our past conversations, you do believe that there is enough money in the custodian, custodian supplies budget, but it's more of a, an issue of implementation, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And I know Ms. Golson and Mr. Stukes is work, are working to address that, is that right?
We're always looking to make the, to maximize the efficiency and the effectiveness of how the account manager has resources and making sure those resources are spent to make our schools clean and safe. Absolutely.
And so if custodians have, or in the process of purchasing, you know, materials out of their own accounts, you know, the leaders of the, the union and other groups could refer them to you or those incidents to you, and you'll, you'll make sure that that doesn't have to occur.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Burles. Mr. Valentine.
Thank you. I had a few questions about, so some follow-up information, and then a more general question. Firstly, do you have data on the percentage of the budget that goes towards salaries of personnel in the county versus non-personnel?
We can easily get that, yes.
Secondly, I think having the data on sort of the claims that you've presented to us as a percentage of the workforce rather than raw data, raw data would actually be helpful as well, if you could do that.
Yeah, in fact, one of the, one of the staff that was recently hired in, in the Risk Management Unit has a specialty in terms of data management, so we're looking to expand on that, yes.
And the last question was around innovation, and we talk about innovation in our classrooms and how we govern, but I want to talk about sort of innovation in your office. And in your presentation, it was clear that a number of your staff are trying to be very innovative in how they are doing their work, to the point where you talked about sort of the revenue from the head start numbers going up from year to year from a new employee coming in, that person brought something new to the position, which was great. Other roles that I think I've seen that you all working with sort of papalist Medicare billing, really thinking outside of the box, or trying to update some of the practices you've done in the past. My question is, how often are you all sort of going through that process of saying, this is how it's been done, this is areas we can improve, these are areas where other similar districts around the state or the country are doing something quite differently, and here's how we go out and capture that information? So my question, you know, more generally is, how are you working with your staff to make sure that they are pushing themselves every day to do their jobs a little bit differently so we can be able to capture just a little bit more in, in what they do, whether it be in, in billing or in, or in sort of capturing funds from folks who, who are indebted to us?
Good, very good question. I, I think one of the, the key benchmarks in my division, and I think it's replicated throughout the district, is communication. I meet with my staff every two weeks, often frequently, more frequently, and when we're meeting, we're, we're, a lot of, a lot of the, a lot of the actual topic is, is troubleshooting, seeing where the different rub points are between interdepartmental operations. And when we're, and when we're finding problems, and we have a lot of problems that we deal with, we, we take those seriously. When we're having difficulty, like for example, with our benefits management program, we, we talked about it as a team and realized, you know, maybe we need some other help, so I've contacted the Council of Great City Schools, Bob Carlson, to get a, to get a, a team. That organization provides experts in benefit management from across the country, they would usually come here, two or three or four of them at a time, and they'll be here for a week, and they'll go through and help do some process mapping and seeing where we have some, some strengths and where we have some weaknesses. Not only that, but we rely on the, a lot of the, a lot of our sister organizations, whether it be Anne Arundel County, Baltimore, Howard County, whatever, Montgomery County, and talk to those organizations and see how they're conducting business. And of course, one of the, one of the key pieces underlies a lot of it has to do with technology, where frankly, we need, we need additional funding for training, because the Oracle application, it's, it's, it's kind of difficult to master, and if you don't have enough sufficient training, when the new applications and new modules and new updates go in to effect, you're behind the curve. So we're, we're always trying to look at different ways to get the job done a little bit quicker, a little bit cheaper, always with effectiveness at the forefront. So I think everybody on my team is always trying to do a better job that's more effective, because you know when, when you're not being effective, because you get results, you get feedback, and a lot of it is informative.
Can you clarify, someone mentioned that in your procurement, you're working with other departments outside of the school district to sort of capture some of those, that bulk savings, is that true?
Like in consortium.
Consortium, so are you sort of working with the Parks Department or with folks in the county, you know, County Executive's Office to sort of say, we're going to be buying this for our office, let's work together and buy it in bulk for the county?
I believe that's true. Brenda, you want to speak to that?
We do have a collaborative relationship with the county, where we look at products and services that we provide here at the district to determine whether or not we can go into a joint venture, a joint procurement to get, to leverage our spend. We've done that on several occasions, we've done it with salt, we've done it with paper, we've done it with toner, we've looked at some of the services that they provided and just piggybacked on the contracts that they had, because they just provided us with a better option for the school system. So we do do that, but we not only do it with the county, we do it with other jurisdictions as well. So we belong to COG out of DC, and we belong to Brick Pack in Baltimore. Those consortiums, we look at what we do as a school system, because they're all school systems or governmental agencies, and see how we can bridge those gaps or, or leverage all of our spending power to get the, bring best value to our organizations.
Thank you. And, and the last point, I guess that's around the minority businesses or just sort of who we procure from in general, and how we sort of incentivize or promote sort of minority-owned businesses, women-owned businesses. And something that we don't talk about is sort of businesses that hire our students, our graduates. We're producing students who do, who can be doing a lot of the work in our academies, and whether there's some way to promote these businesses to be hiring those who are products of the system. We don't have to answer that now, but it's something sort of me on my soapbox thinking. don't have to answer that now, but it's something, sort of me on my soapbox thinking, you know, we have these academies at Crossland and the like, and then we have folks who are looking for jobs, but then may not be able to find them. But if we could in some way promote that with our, our subcontractors or something like that, I think it'd be a good win-win for everybody. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Valentine. Ms. Williams?
Good afternoon. My first question is around the student-based budgeting. On slide seven and eight, you talk about the-
I'm sorry, Ms. Williams, a little closer to the mic, if you could.
On slide seven, seven and eight, you talk about small school subsidies. And on slide seven, you mentioned that there are 43 schools that are considered small schools. Is, is that going to be the same this year? Has there been a change in the FY15 school year, for the FY15 school year?
Yes, ma'am. So for small schools, previously, we looked at elementary schools with less than 350 students. This year, there is small, and then there's smaller. So there's less than 250, and then there's 250 to 350, because there's just a little bit, something a little different you see in the data, especially when you're talking about, some schools have kindergarten all the way through sixth grade. So for instance, if you have a, a K8s or a, a school that's a K6, and you have 187 students, you need to maintain at least one teacher, perhaps two, at every single grade level. And the algorithm, as it was previously in 13 and 14, just didn't allow for that, because it was based on a flat dollar amount for every student that you were missing, essentially underneath that threshold. So that changed for the elementary schools. At the high school level, we also dropped the number from 1,300 down to 1,000. So under, at 1,300, I think 12 of our 22 high schools were considered small. So we dropped that down to 1,000, which reduced that number in half. So we also were able to reallocate funding that was based on the actual classroom teacher positions. So they would get in multiples of a teacher, so that they were really able to funnel the resources into the classroom, or into other specialists that would support instruction. So an instructional lead teacher, or a peer mediator, or an additional guidance counselor, something that would not have been as affordable without those additional funds.
Well, my biggest concern is at the high school level. I have three schools in District Nine. And with the high schools going down to 1,000, I know in particular, one was brought to my attention, where they are just above that 1,000, and they're very concerned about the, losing that small school subsidy. Is there a plan, or have you all spoken with the, the principals at the, at the schools that just fall above the small, the new small school?
So for every one that there's nine students above, there's ones that's nine students below. So there's a little bit of give and take. Anytime you have a number, you have a couple that are always on each side of that delimeter. In the case of the schools that fell between 1,000 and 1,300, and actually, it's true for all of our schools, we have what we call hold harmless, it's transitional funding. So it caps how much they can lose in year over year, and that's to control for things like changes in our algorithm. And it's also meant to account for changes in population that would be eligible for weights. So a school that loses its sixth grade, which is a weighted grade, right? So their per pupil could drop by more than 4% because they're losing a considerable amount of money at the, at this per-student level. So in some cases, the schools that, those five schools that were, that had their status changed, were propped up by hold harmless. I know that to be case, the case for the school that you're speaking about. And actually, if they want to give back their hold harmless and have the small school subsidy, they'd actually lose money. So if they want to do that, let me know. And, but we also looked at a lot of those high schools that are really ramping up with our SSR initiative. So schools that don't have to purchase 100% of their course offerings out of their student-based budgeting money. So schools that have a bunch of positions coming from the SSR initiative. So students are still being able to pick from a wide variety of course offerings, that they're not being able to choose from less, just because of how the model's running for them.
Well, I think it's, that's a very complex answer to a simple question. And when the, and when the information is shared with parents, and this is where the biggest fear comes in, what is told is, oh, we lost our small school subsidy. And the definition or description of what is being replaced, I don't think that's very clear. So maybe we can talk offline to share how we can sort of inform the public of how the small school subsidy is being replaced, or how they do not lose it 100%. Because I, I hate for factual information to be put out there that's not fully factual. So let's talk offline on that.
Sure.
I had another question.
Ma'am, before you go to your next question, it is a complex formula, but however, when the rubber does meet the road, we have like a, a safety net, classroom balancing. And it normally happens in the beginning of the following school year, where once the enrollment comes in, we actually look at to see how the new enrollment is impacting each individual school. But we just finished a pre-classroom balancing process.
Tuesday?
Tuesday. And so the principals were to work with their instructional directors, who conveyed all that information to the associate superintendents, forwarded to Christie. We met with the associate superintendents, the deputies, and chief operating officer, to go through all the concerns now, so that we could address. Not that we resolved all the issues, but we did give the principals an opportunity, right now, to address their concerns for the strategic plans that they were trying to lay out for next year. And that's not the only time we're going to do it. So we're going to do it again. And that's communicated to the principals. So if you have schools in your district, I'm not saying to go out and say, hey, call and say, I need this, this, and this. But as they're laying out their instructional plan, there is a vehicle to actually accommodate some of these hardships that are based on that complicated form.
Right.
When we look at-
In addition to that, board member, we also had a high school principal meeting this morning, and I reiterated that to the high school principals again, that this is really a revolving process. Even though the original allotments were given last month, we understand that plans are still being made. School improvement targets are still occurring, registration, so it's not final. So as far as communication with parents, there was an original communication in the first of March with parents, but hopefully there will be ongoing communication, because some of those requests that principals made, and it was, for the most part, a lot of the schools, because of the small school subsidy, did request additional funding over and beyond what was allotted for their SBB. And as Dr. White just indicated, we did meet as a group. And for the most part, there were a lot of yeses to those requests, and if it was not a yes, we were asking for additional information. So we are trying our best to meet the needs of all of the schools, so that they can meet the instructional needs of their students.
And, you know, I appreciate that. And I understand that this is, one, we're going through a transition. And two, when we look at how things used to be done, where this student-based budget was brought in front of the, the PTAs, and the PTA sign off, the parents believed that's all they, that's the only chance. And so to be able to say, we will continue this conversation, and we will continue to look at the needs of the schools individual, individually, I think is, it keeps hope. But right now, what I'm hearing is, oh my God, we're no longer considered a small school, and we've lost so much money. What are we going to do? So we'll talk offline, and try to make sure that we get that word out there, that it's, this is a continuation of moving to a different space with the, with the changes on the small school subsidy piece. My next question, I believe, is on slide 18. When you were talking about the grants and the grants management section, how much of, of, what percentage of our grants are grants that we get directly versus ones that we collaborate with others on? Or do we even get involved in those? For example, we, we just signed a, a letter supporting a nonprofit to receive a grant a couple meetings ago. Do we even stay involved with those grants that are a collaboration with other groups? Or do we just track the ones that we get directly?
Let me bring our grants, financial management expert to the mic. Daryl?
Good afternoon, board. There is, we work, our office works with another office out of the performance management office, the enterprise performance management office, and the strategic planning office. And they are the first step of engaging grant opportunities for, for the school district. The majority of our grants are grants that we apply for, for the district. We do have partnerships that we collaborate with the local colleges and universities. We do have some civic organizations where we have MOUs or other standing agreements, where we will receive services from the different activities. But the majority of our grants are grants that mostly come for activities that are directly associated with what you see in our Bridge to Excellence Master Plan. But there is some collaboration with other outside entities, and we do have partnerships where we work with community organizations on funding that benefits our students and other areas of the district, like professional development for our teachers and administrators, et cetera.
So are those, do we track and manage those the same as we do the ones that we get directly?
Yes, we do track those. Even if the grant doesn't directly appropriate funds to the district, if we're just in, in partnership, and we're receiving services, we do track those as well.
I think one of the slides, I had a question here, but I think one of the slides may have answered. When, of the total amount of grants that we receive, how are we on spending those grants? Because I know at some point, if there is a timeline associated with that grant, if we don't spend it within a certain period of time, either it's goal, it goes back, or we, we get to extend the grant. How are we doing on that? And I'm not sure if that was answered on slide 20, where we talk about 94% of the grant funds received are spent. Is that?
Yes. The majority of our grants, for example, in the area of entitlement programs, where funds are appropriated based on a prescribed law or regulation, many of those grants are multi-year programs. So as you see on our slide, of the budgeted amount that we had for FY13, we expensed 94% of that amount. So the balance of those programs, our majority would be carryover from grants that extend beyond a 12-month period. Now, we also have a small majority of grants that may run on a fiscal year basis, on a 12-month cycle. And those programs are, if, if there are dollars left on those programs as unused spending authority, what we normally try to do is work with our program managers to actually forecast where we think we may be before the grant ends, so they can apply for extensions before the, the period ends, for them not to be able to do that. So that's part of what our office does in, in partnership with the enterprise performance management office, and our engagement with the program managers.
That's all I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Higgins?
Thank you very much. I want to echo my colleague's comments about all the hard work that's being done on behalf of the school system and the students, because every money we save can, can then go back into the classroom. So, thank you. Mr. Shirin, could you talk about how the work that you're doing in your department fits with the financial management, what's called financial management practices audit, that was mentioned in the beginning of your presentation with those 23 findings?
Shirley, the, the, the single biggest way we are interacting with that is, the fiscal compliance unit is charged with making sure that for all of the findings and recommendations that there's a management response to, that we then execute that. So we have, we have, as we said, the 23 findings from, from the legislative audit. Concurrently, we have the, the transition team report, of which there's a series of observations and recommendations, several of which are in the, in the business services arena. And so those are being looked at as well. And then, thirdly, we have, we have the prospect of a, of a county performance management audit. And I think that that's been, we, we met with the county this week on that, a team of, of school system officials with a team of county council officials. And they had laid out an outline as to the areas that we would look at. We talked about them at length. They're going to send us a revised draft, and we're going to be trying to incorporate the, the various findings associated with our, our legislative audit, as well as the CEO's transition team report relative to business services. And then we'll put those in a priority order, because with all of that work, because each one of those findings and the management response to it represents a project, so to speak. So those different projects will be put in a rank order. We're bringing that to, to Dr. Maxwell and the executive team, to look at that, to look at that, 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 that work plan. And then we'll begin executing. As you can see in some of the, some of the slides, and some of the comments that were made, some of the, some of those findings are already being addressed by staff.
So you're already beginning to implement those, the issues raised on those findings?
Yes, ma'am.
And, and I would think that as they get resolved and corrected, if the administration in some format may be coming, doing a presentation, as you do, maybe four or five of them at a time, coming and say that these have been resolved, so that the public as well knows that we're addressing them in a very organized manner.
Absolutely. We'll make sure that, that, that communication.
Okay. On page 30, on slide 37, thank you for that. I think it's the risk management-
Yes, ma'am.
-slide. Is it not? It's not up. Okay. Yeah. I noticed that we've significantly been able to get our numbers down for fiscal year 14. Is that because we're not done yet? But if you look at-
Yes, that's, that's the answer. That's just a partial year.
Oh, because if the auto liability claims were in the 200s, and we're at 111, that's nothing to get excited about yet.
No.
Okay. All right. Well, that was my hope. And then I wanted to, to conclude by asking, similar to Mr. Burrows' question in regards to custodians and the supply issue, could the individuals who work with the supplies talk about how the supplies get to individual schools?
You mean, you mean in terms of the delivery?
That, that's right. I mean, how do you know what, what supplies go to schools, and how do they get them? I'm sorry. The request process, how, how does that all work?
I'll have Mr. Johnson speak to that.
Because I too have heard, it's, it's a significant issue. So just even understanding-
Shirley.
-how that process works would be helpful for us.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
The process is done basically through the Oracle process. It's ordered through the maintenance department. Okay, it goes through plan operations. They order it. It goes through, what they do is, is approved through them, it comes through us, we run a process through Oracle.
Okay.
And so we run that process every day. There are certain times of the year, I can tell you, those orders get put, it, it gets a lot. We get a lot of orders. And so we can't fill them as fast as they come in. Like now, the beginning and the end of the fiscal year, everybody will be ordering. And so we may get 500 lines in one day, you know. So all those won't be able to pull, be pulled in two or three days. And so it pushes the orders back.
Are people, I'm sorry, do, do, individuals who need the supplies, can they order before they're completely out, or do they have to-
Yes, yes.
So they're in control as to when they order them?
Absolutely, absolutely. And we run supplies out every day. I mean, we run the whole county every day.
Yeah, it's a, it's a large system.
Right. And, and so what happens is if, for instance, if a school calls us-
And, and so what happens is if, if, for instance, if a school calls us and say we're running short on something, can I get a partial order? We'll generally, we'll fill those orders for them and send a partial out to them.
So it, you're in the warehouse, though, then there's not generally a problem with supplies being available at the warehouse?
No, ma'am. No, ma'am.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
It looks like if any more comments, anybody else? Who's this? Ms. Monday? Oh, you're next? Excuse me, Ms. Monday, after Ms. Dr. Eubanks.
You gotta be here to speak, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Just to piggyback off what my colleague, Ms. Higgins, was asking regarding supplies and maintenance and how it's delivered to schools. So does that also apply to repairs? I don't know.
You mean in terms of work orders?
Yes, work orders.
No, the work order process is, doesn't, doesn't-
Does it present?
Isn't, isn't associated with the, with the warehouse.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Shirley.
That's it? That's it, Ms. Monday? All right, cool. Okay. I got, now I got a couple of quick questions before round two. Dr. Anderson starts, starts around, I might as well jump into. Just a specific question around both the minority businesses and local businesses. In your bid process, your analysis, your rubrics and your scoring, do we give any preferential treatment at all to minority and/or locally owned businesses in the, in the process, specific in terms of the rubrics or the scoring?
Yes, we do. But that's only when we're looking at local funds. So it's funds that come from the county that we spend. We give it, we, we put a weight on it. So if you are Prince George's County vendor and you are within 15% of a prime vendor, we'll allow you to match that prime vendor.
All right, got it. All right. Thank you. Quick question on Slide 10, just for, for clarity. The percentage of, of the budget allocated to schools, looks like the target goes down from, by three points in FY14 and back up in FY15? Is that, I'm, I'm just wondering, is that a... What's the specific reason for that, 3%? In a, in a large scheme of things, isn't big, but 3% by dollars going to schools could be a big number?
Yes, sir. With that decrease, the way funds are allocated towards the schools, it could be a reorganization that, that the, the central office has resources that are in the schools. Let's take food services. It could be that we were, we reorganized how the central allocation for food services want to be handled, meaning that the staff, instead of reporting directly to the principal in the building, they report to the food service managers. So I believe that that is an actual, just a realignment of those funds. The funds are still there, but it's how the control of it actually is. And so in 2015, with all the resources that we were blessed with this year, that's why the number spiked back up to 78%.
Thanks. Just one last quick question about, broad question about school-based budgeting.
Yes, sir.
Because it's relatively new in the county, as I understand it. And I'm just wondering what we're doing as it relates to tracking and research to measure the impact of school-based budgeting on both staffing, on, on schools and school governance, and ultimately on, on its impact on students? And whether we're really being explicit about measuring that impact to make sure that it, it is indeed working the way we hope it does?
So like you just stated, it is a, a new process to the school district. And we're still really in our infancy stages. But what we have learned over the last two to three years is that we really need to have a, a more focused group in terms of different parties from different stakeholders, being principals, the IDs, to our associate superintendents, so that it's just not the central office, fiscal compliance, or the Budget Department, along with curriculum instruction devising a plan for SBB. It was out of that collaboration that we discovered that there were some nuances that needed to be tweaked this year. And so as we expand that, that focus group, some of the things that you mentioned are some of the reports that we want to be able to develop to say that it, is it really working? Is it making an impact for our students at the grassroots levels? Is the double basic providing the, the resources that we truly indicated? And are all those resources being used in a, in a wise manner? So those are some of the items that we are looking to be able to report back to you on.
Just so I'm clear.
I just wanted to add on. In addition, I think what we also found in the first iteration of school-based budgeting, it was not clear on how much guidance and professional development we provided to our principals prior to allowing them this autonomy with funds. So what we tried to do in this iteration this year, in addition to taking a look at the formulas, is really asking principals and instructional directors to take a look at their instructional focus, at their school strategic plans, as they were making these decisions. And I mentioned to the group yesterday that it has been interesting to hear the conversations that are really around instruction and student achievement as they made these decisions this year. So we still really are in the infancy stages of helping principals and instructional directors make those decisions.
I, I like that. It makes a whole lot of sense about where we're going. I would just recommend, and maybe you're doing this for clarity, that there is kind of an explicit evaluation plan, right? With all the benchmarks. Here are the things. We want to measure the level by which this increases instructional discussions in schools. We want to measure the satisfaction of principals. We want to measure ultimately, so hopefully there's a written, a written plan for that.
Yes, sir.
All right. Okay, round two. Dr. Anderson.
Yes, I have just a few questions on the MBE program. Slide 28. Is this a formal program? There's some kind of certificate of completion? Are we working in concert with the community college or?
I'm sorry, I didn't understand the question.
Is this a formal program?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, it is. Is there like a certificate of completion or some letter or whatever indicating that the person has, the business has-
Has become an MBE? Yes. They have to be, they can be certified. For state-funded projects, they have to be certified through MDOT, which is the State of Maryland Department of Transportation. For locally funded projects, they can be certified by the state of, by the state of Maryland, by WAMADA, and by Prince George's County.
Okay. So I, and I was reading through the role of the MBE program is, can we assume that one of the roles is to get minority businesses more competitive in getting contracts?
Yes, ma'am.
And when we monitor or track this maybe success or of these businesses, once they have completed the program, do we have any evidence that the program is making a difference?
We measure by how well we are increasing our MBE participation. For those who are certified, on the state level, the state will monitor their, how well they're growing and how well they're building their capacity, because they can grow out of the program. And on the county level as well. So they can actually grow out of being MBE, certified MBEs, because they're now prime vendors.
Oh, okay, certified. Okay. And, and we have some statistics on the number of, of these businesses that have actually gotten contracts with the schools?
That have grown out or that are still MBE certified?
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
Once they become certified, the, the idea is for them to become competitive as bidders and for them to get contracts somewhere. And so I'm wondering if we have just any evidence to support that they do in fact get contracts with the schools?
What we do is track, based on the contracts that we, solicitations that we have put out, how many of them are awarded to MBEs as primes?
Yes.
Or how many of those MBEs are subcontractors? So we do monitor. And we monitor that monthly, because we have to share, we have to provide the state with the contract, with a report every month, that's giving them our MBE capacity.
Well, I, I do want to commend you. I think that this is a, there's a serious need for this program, especially relative to the technical assistance that you might be giving to businesses that have not had an opportunity to get into the game, so to speak. So I, I do commend you. And, and, and I am interested, though, in seeing how we determine the success of the program.
And we, we can give you our numbers over the last three, four years, because we've, we've kept them for that long. Because every year, we want to see that we are actually increasing.
Yeah.
When we did it in 2000, 2013, when we looked at our numbers for the last three years, we had increased our capacity by 8%. So we'll look at that again this year.
Your capacity is-
The number of MBEs that we have increased over the last year.
Okay. But, but we don't have information on how many of them have actually gotten into the game? We see how many of them have satisfied the requirements for whatever the state or-
We can, we can pull the report from the state and we can pull the county report and WAMADA, but that's just those vendors who've been certified.
Certified.
Right.
And then the next level is, hey, you, you have the certification.
Are you competing with Prince George's County to get a solicitation?
There you go. Can we, you know? And I know it takes time, but this is the first step.
Yeah, we don't pull our numbers together.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Ms. Williams.
I just have a really quick question. I'm following up on my colleague's, Burrows', question regarding the, the contracting. And it's just so funny, it just slipped my mind. But it's all about the change order process and evaluating the, the work that the contractor does. When they're completing their work, is there a, an evaluation of how they work with the county? How they build the county? How they work with their subcontractors? Do you all keep track of that in-house? And so that when you're evaluating them for a next, another project, that that comes into play? I know sometimes that's a tricky conversation to have. But do we do that in-house?
Yes, we do. We, for, for our vendors, every year, we send a form to the departments, and they have to do a vendor evaluation form to tell us how well they're doing. For construction projects, we ask them to give us that information as the project goes along. Because if they're having issues, then we need to be able to address them upfront, get them to cure, or, you know, find another vendor. So we work very closely with our departments to make sure that they're tracking their vendors and giving us a true picture of what the vendor's doing, because we're not in the trenches with them, but we want to make sure that we're providing them with quality vendors.
So does that come into play the next time they submit a, a bid?
Yes, that, that can be taken into consideration.
Okay.
But it has to be documented.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's give these great folks a round of applause.
Yes.
I appreciate the chance to have my team come forward and speak. They're a rock-solid, dedicated group, and I have the honor of working with them. So thank you very much.
Absolutely. Thank you. Item 6.2, I believe we, you've introduced it already, Dr. Davis, in the Division of Supporting Services Presentation, Part Two. Where, where are you going? You guys can't leave now. You gotta stay with, with the rest of us. Work to do. Whatever. Tell, hey, Dr. Seuss, tell them your people stayed for their presentation.
And, and we surely did.
That, it's not working, though, as you see.
Good afternoon, Dr. Eubanks, Ms. Boston, school board members. As you will recall, we presented one half of the Supporting Services Organization at the last school board meeting. We talked about the fact that we branded ourselves as supporting education through service with a particular focus to customer service. Today, we'll be sharing with you information on the Safety Office, on the Food and Nutrition Services Office, and on the Transportation and Central Garage. And with that, I'll introduce Mr. Vince Curl to start the presentation. Vince?
Thank you, Mr. Stooks. Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Vince Curl. I'm the Safety Officer with Prince George's County Public Schools. And I might add that I was a product of Prince George's County Public Schools. I went to elementary, junior high, high school, went away to college, and came back in Taunton County for 25 years before coming down to Supporting Services. I'm excited to be here this morning, or this afternoon, to share our vision of safety in Prince George's County. We, our mission is to provide safe schools, safe facilities, supporting facilities, and safe offices. I'm sorry. Okay. My apologies. I might be good with safety, but not with a clicker. Just, just by chance, this picture that's up here right now was at Ardmore Elementary School. We had some problems there. School sits way up on a hill, and we had some problems with the buses and the, and the parent traffic co-mingling. We were able to solve that simply by the lines, the signage, and educating the, the parents. We like to think we provide great customer service by cooperating closely with our outside partners, our colleagues, and our internal partners. For example, we work closely with the Fire Department, Facilities, Risk Management, Security Services, Capital Programs, and Transportation. We like to think that collaboration is the key to success. And under Mr. Stooks's leadership, we have developed this close collaboration so that we are always talking and always trying to be on the same plate with our fellow workers. I want to give thanks to Monica Goldson for her support in initiating some of the programs we did, most notably the distribution of the defibrillators to the offices. We had a couple of incidences in our, in our facilities where we had medical emergencies. We realized there was a need, and we put, we put AEDs out there into the buildings. Now, some of our key activities. Probably our mainstream is the performance of routine fire and safety inspections in all our schools, buildings, and grounds. We try to get around to all schools and facilities periodically, identify problems, and, and mitigate those problems, mostly in collaboration with the facilities. We'll find an unsafe condition, we notify them, a work order is issued, and the problem is resolved. We evaluate particularly our fire safety conditions, looking at fire alarms, the fire drill procedure, the fire extinguishers, the kitchen hoods that have automatic suppression systems. And we also ensure that we have the proper documentation in place. When I enter a building, I generally look for three things. There's a RED, a HIRA book, Asbestos Hazard Emergency Response Act, federally mandated in 1982, which all books, all schools must keep up. Then we have a white fire book that I initiated some 10 years ago. So when the fire marshal comes in, he finds all of our documentation relevant to fire safety in one book. And finally, and most importantly, every school has a emergency plan. The emergency plan has evolved over the years so that we, we try to anticipate every event that might happen in a school and have a set response to that particular event. The one we didn't foresee, as you can guess, was the earthquake. We were not prepared really for an earthquake in this area, and we quickly remedied that. That is in our revised draft that we send out to the schools, and they update those every year. We work closely, collaboratively, with maintenance to make sure that our playgrounds are in good shape. Our, our 860 shop, which is part of maintenance, routinely inspects playgrounds and makes the necessary repairs. We work collaboratively with others in the school system to provide AED and CPR training. We just had one last week. It was very successful. And we try to have one a month to associate with the deployment of the 12 AEDs at the offices. Looking towards the future, we would like to be planning the deployment of AEDs in the middle schools and ultimately in all of the elementary schools. So all of our facilities eventually will have an AED. We work in close conjunction with the Transportation Department, analyzing, assessing bus stops, the pickup, and drop-off procedures in the morning and afternoon. And that has been very, very successful. We run a medical monitoring. Let me do my clicker business here. We run a medical monitoring program in conjunction with maintenance so that all those staff members that, that need to wear a respirator are properly medically evaluated, both for pulmonary function, heart condition, and, believe it or not, hearing. And these guys are certified to be able to wear this type of equipment for another year. year safely. We coordinate with Prince George's County Government in our Safe Routes to School. The Safe Routes to School program is a federally funded program where each year, we apply for a grant through the county, and the grant gives monies, varies from year to year, to improve signals, walkways, and pathways to and from the school, but not directly on the school site itself. We're still responsible for that. We work closely with Risk Management and CorVel, trying to identify problems and take corrective action on that. I just met with Mr. Philip Hughes yesterday, as a matter of fact, and we will be visiting some schools to try to bring down a number of workman's comp claims. We're going to start with our, I'll call them problem schools, schools that have the most incidences, and see what we can do to bring that down. In conclusion, the safety program is overarching, broad-reaching. We're there to act as a consultant to anybody who cares to ask for our assistance, and at the end of the day, we all want to go home safely. Thank you much. And now Joan Shorter from Food Services.
Let me get it to where we are. Okay. Good afternoon, members of the board. I thank you for giving us the opportunity to share a little bit about our departments with you. Ensuring that students have access to healthy meals is at the heart of what we do in Food Services. Our mission, we provide meal service, meal management for our students by preparing and serving a variety of high-quality nutritious meals at affordable prices, and that's in working with enhancing the student's ability to learn. Some of our key activities or contributions, we've made a lot of improvements over the past several years in the Department of Food and Nutrition Services. We contribute to the district goal to improve the health of our students by promoting healthier school meals and environment. We plan, our menus are planned with emphasis on fresh fruits and vegetables, more whole grains. We're leaning towards, we're at a minimum of 51% in some of our products, but most of our products are at 100% whole grain. We offer fat-free, low-fat meats, lean meats. And so, we do offer fruit baskets in all of our schools' serving lines. And we are lowering the sodium content in our menus as we run the nutrient analysis. The sodium content, along with the USDA guidelines, those are being lowered as well. We work with the Alliance for a Healthy Generation, Healthy Schools programs, and we follow their guidelines in reference to the products that are in the vending machines that are owned by Food Services. Some of our key initiatives or accomplishments, we were able to implement the new meal pattern requirements in two months so that, which is under the new federal guidelines, the Healthy Hunger Frequent Act of 2010. So, last year, we were successful in an implementation process. We installed a new software management program this school year and did it successfully, which creates a more efficient and effective operation for us in terms of processing meal benefit application. We now have an online module. And so, of the applications that we collected this year and processed, 9% of those applications came through the online module. We successfully met the menu certification requirements to receive the six cents reimbursement per lunch, which helps to defray the cost of the added fresh fruits and vegetables that must be served and offered every day. We have increased, since we did the slide, we have increased our breakfast in the classroom programs to 92. So, we've added 17 additional schools this month. So, we're moving in that direction in terms of breakfast in the classroom. We've eliminated the use of styrofoam products, and we've made a switch to biodegradable and recyclable plastics, keep in line with the school district's recyclable program. We conduct formal and informal product testing with students. We do that in various grades, we do that in classroom, we do that in cafeteria setting. So, we use various models to have students participate in taste testing to determine what items we want to select for the menu. And we've also showcased the menus and the items that were going to be on the menu at our annual food expo. Meal service, we, actually, we feed kids just about all day. We do breakfast, and again, that number's changed to 92 schools that are offering free breakfast to all students regardless of eligibility status. We offer lunch, we serve snacks to the Head Start and the pre-K students. Our school district has 22 schools that are participating in the Fresh Fruits and Vegetables Program, which is a federally funded program through USDA, which introduces students to a variety. It allows us to purchase fresh fruits and vegetables, and we offer those to students as snacks so that they're introduced to more fresh fruits and vegetables, and they can, you know, take that information home to their parents. We provide after-school suppers in 102 schools, and we also do in some community centers as well that are having enrichment, enrollment, that are having after-school enrichment program for students. And we participate in the Summer Food Service Program. We provide meals to not only our summer schools, but we were able to provide meals to apartment complexes. We had a mobile meal unit that took those apartments out, took the meals out to the apartments, because we know that during the school year, our students have an opportunity to eat breakfast, lunch, and suppers in school, and during the summer, they don't have access to those meals. So, we've been taking those meals on the road to the apartment complexes. Just a little facts where we are. Students eligible for free and reduced-price meals, again, since that data was published, we're up, the last count today was 63.5%. So, we're close to 80,000 students who are eligible for free and reduced-price meals as of today. We serve about 70, a little over 72,000 lunches, about 42,000 breakfasts, snacks, 2,500, and our supper count's doubled, so we're over 5,000 suppers a day. So, that ends my portion of the presentation, so I'd like to introduce you to Lori Carter-Evans, the Director of Transportation.
Thank you, Ms. Shorter. To our Board Chair, Dr. Eubanks, Board Members, Executive Cabinet, and Staff, good afternoon. I'm Lori Carter-Evans, Director of Transportation and Central Garage. I want to express my appreciation for your leadership and for the opportunity to speak to you about the Transportation and Central Garage Department. As many of you may know, I began with our school system in June of last year, and I immediately saw the great potential of our department. By education, I am an engineer, but I've made transportation management my profession and have been a transportation leader in school systems and public transit systems in other states over the last 25 years. I am excited because we are moving forward. We have our challenges, but we are building a team that knows how to address issues and continuously improve. This afternoon, I will provide you with an overview of transportation. First, sharing with you our mission. Our mission in transportation is to deliver efficient transportation services that enable all students to arrive at their destination safely and on time every day. So, just how are we planning to meet this mission? Well, several ways. This afternoon, I'm going to share with you our key activities, some facts about the department, and our key initiatives. In keeping with our mission to keep students safe and plan for efficiency, we train drivers and attendants. In fact, this week, we are conducting a pre-scheduled Driver Improvement Program, which is better known as DIP, that is designed to correct deficiencies and remind drivers of safety maneuvers and procedures. We transport students to multiple programs. We have students in transitional housing. In other words, we have programs to support students who may be temporarily homeless. We transport non-public students to schools outside of our county. And we transport students to field trips and athletic events, and we transport our students to our regular public schools, where we get them to school in a time to, in time to enjoy a nutritious breakfast as prepared by our Food and Nutrition Services Department. We evaluate the safety of bus stops and walking routes with the assistance of our Safety Office when more support is needed, as Mr. Curl shared with you. We carry out our route planning. This includes using staggered bell times to be able to use one bus several times to carry different student loads to increase our efficiency. We're also involved in planning our future bus pickups and drop-off areas by working with our Capital Programs Office. So, in our Central Garage, which is where we maintain our fleet, our fleet maintenance, we purchase all vehicles, buses, and non-bus vehicles. We inspect our vehicles. We provide fuel and respond to emergency road calls, as well as maintain our yellow and our white fleet. We were sufficiently busy this winter, as you know, keeping snowplows in good working order, so as we were hit with multiple snowstorms. So, now I want to bring your attention to some facts about transportation. We transport approximately 80,000 students each day, twice a day, actually. We have more than 1,200 buses, including our spare buses, and we have 12 bus lots that we, those buses operate from. We have over 2,000 drivers in attendance and mechanics. We have more than 5,000 bus runs. We transport students across more than 500 square miles, when we consider that we travel outside of the school boundaries as well, outside of the, our county. We have over 2,300 field trips that we deliver students to throughout the year. We have over 40,000 activity trips, that's athletics and our after-school programs. More than 18 million miles are traveled annually by our buses. Our earliest bus leaves the lot at 5:30 a.m., and our latest bus returns to the lot at 6:45 for a regular service. Now, for some key initiatives in transportation. We feel that we had a smooth opening of the school year. We expect that each year, our first day of school will get even better. The focus of our back-to-school training session last year was to build strong partnerships with stakeholders, and we're continuing with that. We also completed a GPS installation project. This year, we were able to install all GPS units on all of our buses. So, they all have GPS units, and they're also integrated with our Trapeze routing system, which means after training and testing, we'll be able to overlay our planned routes with our actual routes as they are traveling on the road. We placed 143 new buses in service to replace buses older than 12 years. This year, we'll also replace 150 more. We've partnered with the Special Education Community Group and the Special Education Department, and this is to build better working relationships with parents, and so that we can be proactive and address some of the issues before they become major issues. Our transportation leaders, my staff, attended PTA meetings to address transportation concerns, and this is something that's going to take place on an ongoing basis. We also realigned our reporting structure of transportation training staff to report directly to me, to the director, to shape training, the training program for drivers, our bus attendants, and our staff. Transportation supervisors are also out in the schools on a daily basis, and that's also so that we can be proactive and provide better customer service to our stakeholders. Some more key initiatives that we have. We're establishing a routing task force. Actually, we've already kicked off our first meeting, and this task force consists of members from each bus lot and our internal staff, and this is to begin planning for next school year. We're also establishing a transportation community advisory team, and this is something that's new for transportation. I've done it in past organizations, and it is a good way to get our stakeholders involved in the planning for transportation and in understanding what we do. And it gives us an opportunity to hear firsthand from our community. So, this team that we are going to reach out to would include the community, and we would recruit from that area, along with our students, parents, drivers, and other internal stakeholders. So, I'll be working closely with our Communications Department to get this underway. We're also updating our transportation policies and procedures. We're continuously hiring and training, and we're creating a customer-service-focused culture. We're not all the way there, but that's what our focus is. So, with all these initiatives and focus on changing our culture, we feel that we are on the move. This concludes my portion of the presentation, and I thank you for your attention. Mr. Stooks.
Thank you, Ms. Carter-Evans. And if you recall from the last week's board meeting, one point that I did want to make, and again, that we are moving in the customer-focused, customer-service arena, but we're not where we are going to be. But we feel like we're on the right path, and that with the team that is here with me today, along with the folk that you met at the last school board meeting, I think we're on the way. We're on the way. We're not there, but we're getting there. So, I think that's an important point to make. So, with that, we'll take any questions that you might have.
Thank you, thank you all for that great and informative presentation. Colleagues, the floor is now open for questions. I have so far Burrows, Higgins, Muse, Aria, and Valentine. Anyone else please buzz in. Thank you. Mr. Burrows.
I'll keep my first round very brief and focus on security. You know, I think we're making significant gains in our security department. I believe the department's becoming an active department, more professional, the uniforms, the training. I understand that we now have, what is it, deputies or lieutenants? Is it lieutenants?
No, they're not lieutenants.
Is the security...
No, he's not here today. He presented last week.
Oh, yep. My bad. Okay. Okay, yeah, safety's different than security, apparently. I was wondering why, you know...
They're two separate offices.
Right. That makes perfect sense.
It does?
Right. Well, this is also with under your division.
Yes.
But I'll reserve those for differently.
Okay.
All right. That's it? All right. Yes, Ms. Higgins?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Stooks. It's always a pleasure. And I want to specifically mention the Safety Office, Mr. Curl, who has been very responsive to two communities that we had issues with, and he came out and worked with the two communities in terms of resolving them in those situations, and that was very helpful. I wanted to also recognize the, I do have some questions, but I just want to make a couple of statements. The Food Service Department, because while we, as a system, had 23 findings in our Financial Management Report that need attention, the report went out of its way to commend what was happening in the Food Service Department, and I would just like to read three sentences that highlighted what's happening in Food Service. So, Prince George's County Public Schools utilized best practices to monitor and track the results of Food Service operations. Prince George's County Public Schools has an appropriate process in place to maximize participation of all eligible students in the National School Meals Program. And Prince George's County Public Schools had implemented appropriate procedures and controls over cafeteria-related cash receipts. So, you and your staff and all of the hard work that has come into to get that notification, Ms. Shorter, thank you for all your work with that. I don't think it's easy to get one sentence, much less three, from those individuals. That's right. I have a question about Food Service, and then I have a couple of Transportation if I get them done in this time. So, Ms. Shorter, you mentioned that we have 80,000 students eligible for free and reduced meals. I understand that it's harder to get the high school students engaged in this process, so my question has to do, is that true? And how do you determine eligible? Do you count those that maybe we, that aren't interested in being identified as free and reduced meals?
No, the 80 are actually those that have been identified as free and reduced. So, we have various models. We do, we have an online application process. We also do what's called, we have a direct cert file, so we get a file from the state every month with a list of all the students who are receiving benefits, SNAP, TANF, and so we automatically, those students are automatically eligible. So, within our software system and our program, we match students, and we match address, and we match households. So, if a high school student does not submit an application, and we run that match, and that address comes up, we pull those students... that address comes up, we pull those students in. So our numbers are a lot higher than they have been in the past because now it's a family app. So when the application comes in, it comes in from the elementary student, typically from the elementary student.
Right, yes.
That has all the students listed on the application.
So are you fairly comfortable that we're getting a large percentage of those students who are eligible?
I, I think we are. I think we could do better with our matching from the state. Some of the concerns that we have with that is that our, our population is transient, so we, and sometimes their names are spelled one way and they're in the system another way. So we try to do that and then we periodically internally look at those numbers, we look at the numbers of students as we go back and check and then we've, if we notice that there are students by, that are four students at one address, but we've only picked up one student in that match, then we'll pull those students in and send a letter out.
Okay.
And let them know.
Thank you.
I mean, I would like to see us improve in that, but I think the way that our, the only way that we can really match those students is by social security numbers and we don't use social security numbers as an identifier in the school district.
Right. Mr. Watts probably would have a heart attack if we got into that.
Right.
With the, thanks. Thank you very much. Ms. Carter Evans, I, I have to, to say what I, I believe I'm, many, many people know to be true as well. The change in transportation under Mr. Stukes' leadership and your leadership has just been phenomenal. The graciousness with which...
Thank you.
The gracious, graciousness with which the transportation team handles concerns and responsiveness and even if it's not right the first time, they, they keep at it, has just been transformational and really helps when parents are worried about their children on the bus, that you are the first ones they see and to have such a responsive team is, is really, really outstanding. So thank you for all that.
Thank you.
Now where the buses go, so let's talk about that. I read in your recent report that you have a GPS system. Can you talk about how, what advantages that will give us when you do get those calls?
Actually, our GPS system, because it tracks every place that the bus goes, if a parent were to call and needed to know exactly where the bus was or what time the bus is going to arrive, we're able to look on our computers and, and, and see where that bus is at the time. So in the past, when that would happen, when parents were wondering, you know, is the bus, when it's behind schedule, we would have to call out on the radio to ask a driver, you know, what's your location, what's your ETA? Where actually now, we can pull that up on GPS and, and give a faster response to parents.
So we're using that now? We're implementing that now?
We are using that right now. We implemented that just before school started, so there's still a learning curve, so there are some people that are able to use it better than others. So, but we hope by the start of next school year and as we get more expertise under our belt, that we'll be able to do that across the, the county.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and ask my two questions in case it buzzes in. So you can, let me ask the questions and then I'll be very interested in your responses. So one of them has to do with, we had received emails about that if they're out till six forty-five p.m. and a parent, you know, has trouble getting to, how long are staff on the phones? How late in the day are staff on the phones to be able to address a parent concern if they, their child hasn't come home yet? And then the second thing would be, I know that the finance management report also identified issues for the transportation department and I'm wondering if you could talk briefly about that as well, what you're doing in that area?
Sure.
Thank you and thank you again.
We have staff available to take calls from six a.m. until six p.m. After that, we do currently transfer those over to our security office. We're looking at doing something different so that we can more readily respond to parent concerns if they do have questions after hours. But our security staff currently, we've equipped them with all the phone numbers. They have my phone number, they have the phone numbers of all the supervisors and we also have staff at our bus lots at that time. They don't typically take the calls, the calls come into central office, but if security personnel needs some assistance in assisting a parent, then they can get in touch with one of our bus lot members.
The report?
And, and from the report, I, I know that the report was done two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve. However, in some, there have been some strides that have been made over the years. However, in order to address some of the timekeeping systems that, or the time payroll system that was, that was mentioned, some of those, those issues, our GPS system actually helps us with that as well. Because we know now when a bus is moving, when, when somebody's on a bus. There's also a way to expand that GPS system where we will know when a pre-trip is done and when a post-trip is done. That hasn't been implemented yet, that tool, but we still currently have a way that we can see when the, when the driver is, is actually starting up the bus and when the driver shuts the bus off for the end of the day. So if we needed to go back and verify time, we can do that by using our GPS system.
Thank you very much. Thank you again.
Thank you, Ms. Musaria.
Hello. I have a question for transportation. I have a few questions. The first one, the drivers improvement program you're talking about happening this week, is it a requirement for all drivers or is it optional?
No, this is optional. This is something that we feel the need that, to do. As we become more of a, we want to always stay on the forefront of training our drivers. So we felt that it's good in the fall and in the spring to get our drivers as they, before they return to their bus lots to park their bus, we actually have them go to a facility like Bowie Bay Sox and we set up cones where they can practice maneuvers. We have our trainers out there and then as, as they're doing things that aren't, are not safe operations, we can readily correct them as they're doing it there. And so it's a reminder of how you operate the bus.
Okay. And the second question I have is the one hundred and forty-three new buses, is it, are the purchases just gonna, how would I say this? Are they just going to replace the old buses? Are there a few new buses coming into place? Like, is there additional buses that we're adding on?
Yeah, we're not expanding our, our buses, so actually those are purchased to replace buses.
Okay. And then the last question I have for transportation is, as a student, you know, I ride the bus. I've been riding the bus since kindergarten and an issue I hear from the students is late buses and I wanted to know, are there any records when a bus comes late, when a bus comes late?
Yes, we do have records as we have our GPS system that will show us when a bus arrives late. We still have some, that's an area of growth and opportunity for us to reduce the number of buses and to track our on-time performance. And there are some initiatives that we're going to be developing around that.
Okay. And if there are any records on hands, can, can I see those records? Can you send me the records?
Sure, we can send you a GPS report.
Okay, thank you. And the next question I have is for food and nutrition services. Oh, there's my paper. Hi, Ms. Shorter.
Hi.
It's great seeing you again. I had a pleasure of meeting with Ms. Shorter this weekend. She answered a lot of the questions I had. I have one more question.
Okay.
So this is like, okay, so I'm, I want to discuss the student's perspective on lunches. And I know that, and students, that, that students complain a lot about lunches. And I, and I, in the discussion, we did talk about this, but I want to know, is there at least an initiative to look at other programs and at least to involve students with at least, I don't know, talking of, having a council and talking to students to like, get a perspective of what they want and at least visiting other programs and allowing students to taste sample those different food programs in the area?
Absolutely. We, we do that in our schools now with taste testing. We do high schools, we do elementary schools and we do middle schools at all different levels. Sometimes it's maybe the, in a classroom, a particular classroom that we taste test with. Again, there are times when we just bring the students through the serving line and they taste us if they like it, then we ask our brokers to send a sample, so we put it on the menu that day and get feedbacks. So some are, that would be one of our informal, where we're just getting the information from the students. The formal is when we actually have a survey. We did that at Buck Lodge and they used their iPads to, to enter the survey in regards to the breakfast items that they do like. And that's what we do when we, we have our food show, is that we try to introduce those products. And because we're such a large school district and we rely on the generosity of our manufacturers and with budget shrinking budget for them as well as us, we have not been able to have it in two parts of the county. And so one of the suggestions that we had talked about was maybe when the P-grass meeting, when you have all of those students together that represent, you know, all schools, we can talk about our menu process, how we select our menus, the guidelines that we have to follow, the calorie restrictions, the sodium restrictions, so they get a better understanding of how we plan our menus and then they, we can use those students to take that information back to their schools. So we're willing to do that and work with the Student Advisory Council to do that.
I have one more question. In reference to the new regulations by USDA, I know about one of them, but what are the new regulations for next year that are expected to?
Well, the sodium limits are going down. So we have the sodium limits that's, that's decreasing. We also have the smart snacks in school and so I've asked Mr. Stukes, so for us to be on, get on the principals, at one of the principals' meetings to talk about what will be in the vending machines. So I've been working with purchasing because they're the ones that have the contract for those vending machines, but the guidelines are very strict, so we're looking at high schools and I can remember because I sort of have to know, no more than twenty ounces of a be, I mean, twelve ounces of a beverage. And the calorie range between that has to be no more than sixty calories. So in terms of entree or snack items, we're limited to about two hundred calories and the sodium limit is, is like two hundred or less, so three fifty, two hundred. So it's very difficult finding a lot of those products and we've been working with companies trying to find those items that we think are going to be acceptable to students so that as we move forward with the vending machines, what can go in there? So we're working on that. It's, I think the USDA has made these guidelines, but the manufacturers have not caught up with those products. So those twenty ounce Gatorades and all of those will not be sold next year.
Okay. Thank you.
I think some principals probably wouldn't clap because of their, their student activity fund or the money that they need for their athletics. So it's just finding those right products. And so we've asked all of those companies to send us samples so that we can take a look at it, we can make sure that it meets the guidelines, because that is a federal law that will go into effect and if schools violate what's in the vending machines, there is possibility of fiscal sanctions.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. I have Valentine, Eubanks and Williams. You're on, Valentine?
Thank you. While we're on the subject of nutrition, I was curious whether you all keep track of childhood obesity numbers in our county?
No, we don't keep track of it. I think Dr. Walkaway has been, we've been working with the school health council and the local, our school wellness team to take a look at that. And so I think part of it is, is we talk about child, childhood obesity. I think we need to look at it in a broad spectrum, not necessarily, because our, our program, the school meals program is so highly regulated in terms of calories, fat content, because everything has to be under thirty percent fat. We do low-fat milk or non-fat milk. So what we, what we're looking at and working with the various group is to incorporate the physical activity in it. Because if there are no physical activity involved, then, and then to try to educate our students when they leave school to not get the twenty ounce or the twenty-four ounce gallon or things like that of soda, things like that. But we are looking at that and Dr. Walkaway had presented where the obesity, the areas of obesity in Prince George's County, thirty-seven percent, right? And so we're looking at that as well. But certainly I can say, based on our menus and the nutrient content, that's not a contributing factor and we, we try to, to say this is what we offer. Because we do, we run a nutrient analysis, we have to do that by law as well. But we need to, to get our students more involved. The Alliance for Healthy Generation does a great job with that and I think we need to focus a lot on the physical activity. I think we don't see that as much anymore. We don't see kids playing outside as much anymore.
Yeah, I think it'd be helpful to draw a correlation between the obesity number and the induction, introduction of these things to kind of show before and after. But thanks. Mr. Stukes, the question around the installation of social security doors, is that, that safety or is that security?
It's both.
Both, okay. So where are you all in the installation of the security sort of buzzer cameras on every door in the county?
We are, we are anticipating having all of that done by the beginning of school this year.
Beginning of school next year, in September, August?
August.
Okay.
Wish it was September. But we anticipate having that done and we can get you a schedule of what schools have been done as well as what the schedule is for getting the remaining ones done.
Okay. And if you can give us sort of a school by school, so some of my colleagues can tell by their districts. A final question was for Ms. Carter Evans and I will just continue with the, the love fest for the bus department and just say that the work that you all do is tireless work. You transport tens of thousands of students every day and are never thanked for what you do, but unfortunately, instances that happen sort of overshadow that work and I want to say thank you to your staff whose work I, we see on a daily basis just driving down the street. And I, I rode a bus like Ms. Musaria did and I was not the best bus rider, so wherever that bus driver is, I apologize. So the question is, is about assessment of, of drivers and, and how they are assessed, how often they're assessed and by who? And secondly, around the walkways. So for example, on the main street in front of my, where I drive every day, the sidewalk has been eliminated because there's road construction, particularly on Oxen Hill Road, and students often have to walk either in construction or cross the street where there's no walkway because it's not, it's a, yeah, there's no walkway, so students are sort of crossing and they're walking on grass. And I'm, I was curious about whether that's something that you all coordinated with the county. I'm pretty sure it's a county road, it's not a, it's not a major highway, about sort of demarcating lanes for students to walk when you all have, when, when the county is doing construction on a road. So around how often you all go out and kind of do, do a drive-by or get calls and say, hey, this, there's no more walkway, my child has to walk sort of, you know, really close to a barrier, on the wrong side of a barrier or cross the street? And then secondly, around how you assess, assess drivers?
Okay. Our drivers each year, and I'm not sure by assessment if you mean their driving skills or, or their fitness. So every year, our drivers are required to have a physical to make sure that they are capable of performing the duties of a driver. So that's on an annual basis. As far as driving maneuvers, those are things that we take care of during our driver improvement program as they drive, like as this week where we're assessing their abilities while they're on the road. We also have our driver trainers that are out making observations, riding the buses with drivers to make sure that they are driving properly from the, from actually watching them on the bus. We also have supervisors who are out and about observing our buses as they're traveling along the road and as we see any operational deficiency, then that is addressed with, with our drivers. Also, we have post-accident training when a driver has an accident and this is something that is, is new that we are increasing. We go back over what caused the accident and what they could do differently so that we make sure that there's not a, a repeat of that accident.
So a question around, so your, our drivers are, are they on annual contracts or how, how often do they renew their contract with us?
They, they work from July first until June thirtieth. However, we have summer school, so our drivers, some of them come back and, and work throughout those programs.
So do you, how do you all make a determination rather to extend a driver's contract versus, say this, we don't want that person working for the county anymore, based on anything?
So how do we determine when we don't want them to continue working?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. Well, we have annual evaluations as well. We give our drivers feedback based on certain criteria. That doesn't necessarily cause them not to return to us, but performance violations, progressive discipline, that's what would cause a recommendation for termination.
Okay. And then the last thing about the, the walkway?
Yes. I'm going to defer to Vince Curl, our safety officer.
Thank you. In reference to your question, we meet monthly. In reference to your question, we meet monthly with Department of Public Works at the Special Operations Building, Prince George's County Police over in Riverdale. Uh, we discuss future and planned, uh, improvements to walkways with particular attention to pedestrian safety. They evaluate statistics and decide whether a new signal is warranted, whether, uh, new walkways are warranted, of course, the new, uh, metro line becoming down University Boulevard, so we've been discussing that, uh, and how, how that will impact schools and walking paths. As far as site-specific and case-specific instances, uh, when we are contacted by the school, parents, PTA, uh, we investigate, uh, walking route safety in conjunction with the, the principal and what we do then is we contact, uh, Department of Public Works and Transportation and/or the state, if it's a state road, and try to mitigate that situation. But it's clearly, uh, you know, case by case. Hope that answers your question.
Yeah, I'll follow up with you, um, on any specific request I've had. Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
All set? All right, I got a couple of, of kind of quick ones myself, uh, on food services, just a quick couple of these, yes and no. Um, this year you implemented a new, the new, uh, payment software. I know there was some glitches in the beginning as you transferred from one to another. Is it going smooth, everything worked out in that regard?
Sure.
All right, great. Great. Uh, on the, on the bus transportation, uh, there was a question, there was, um, at one point I learned about the fact that the GPS could potentially be upgraded so that parents could actually access that. Is that in the plans or is it desirable? If it's not, it's, I'm just curious.
That technology is available. Um, it's not something that's in the plan right now. Of course, in order to, um, access, uh, the GPS system, there would need to be some, uh, permissions to get through our firewall, our IT, um, department may be able to, uh, we would have to work in conjunction with that.
So could, if it happened, this would be something a bit down the line?
Yes.
Okay, good. Uh, just a quick follow-up to Ms. Musario's question about the DIP training that's optional. Uh, considering it's optional, how many drivers attend?
Well, actually, when I said optional, I'm sorry, I, it's not required by law. It's not optional within the department. We do require all of our drivers to go through the driver improvement program.
I think we're under the impression that the drivers, it was optional for the drivers?
No.
It's not optional for the drivers? Okay, great. Um, the only other question I have is, is kind of a broad-based question about the challenge around, uh, creating a customer service-focused culture. Um, I definitely concur with, uh, with my colleagues about the sea change that we've seen at the top and, and how it, it comes down, but the concept of changing culture is a huge task, as you know. Uh, it's a multi-year process and so I'm just wondering if you have an explicit plan in place, a design, you know, your cultural improvement plan one oh one, right? So that we really can lay out specifically, again, what the, what the benchmarks are, how you know that your culture is improving and what is it that we're doing explicitly to see that culture change? And that's, I mean, I think that's across the board, it's not just transportation, just across the board.
Sure. Uh, we've talked internally to explore options as to whether to bring in outside instructors to teach, uh, customer service. And then we decided that we were going to build our own customer service program that we were going to take ourselves through first. And actually, this was based on a model that was created by, uh, our Nutrition Services Department. Um, they, where they, uh, created a PowerPoint. So what we wanted to do was go and, um, design one for transportation where we would do some role-playing and show them exactly what our expect, expectations are. We also, just before this meeting today, we had a non-public training session, which means our non-public drivers and our bus attendants, we went over what our expectations are for safety and also student management. And we gave them, we presented to, a, a number of things, but we presented a skit where we showed them, okay, we had a bus set up and we showed them this is, um, the wrong way to handle certain things and then this is the right way to do that. So it's, um, in order to get, be successful with the customer service and the cultural change, we need to do that ourselves and actually reach our people at every level. So our management staff, our supervisors, myself, the operation supervisors, we are going to be the people who will go out and meet with our drivers, our assistants, our office staff members, so that we're all doing this together.
And, and Mr. Stooks, is this kind of training going on across, uh, Division of Supporting Services as well?
It, it is. Um, one of the things that, um, we are trying to do, as I've said before, is not change in individual departments, but across the, the division. Um, we are also trying to change ourselves. Uh, we meet, my, my direct reports and I meet on a weekly basis and we are now, uh, going through a, um, a, a process of taking a look at how we've done since we had our last retreat. Um, what have we done? Where can we see improvements? How can we pick up on those opportunities of doing things better? So it's not just the individual departments, although that's important as Ms. Carter Evans talked about, the fact that, that, um, she's picking up something from, from food nutrition, but it's important across our division and we are working mightily to make that happen.
Thank you. Ms. Williams?
Thank you. It's always a pleasure talking with you, Mr. Stooks. Um, my first question is about the, um, the supper details. Can, on the food and nutrition, you spoke about providing suppers and I think that it's very interesting and, and apparently very needed. Can you talk to us about that?
Supper, um, is served in, in schools. Schools that have, um, greater than fifty percent free and reduced population are eligible for the supper program. So many of those schools have after-school enrichment programs. So they're doing tutoring, um, they're doing, it's not just maybe dance or various different programs. And those schools are, those students are after school. So many of our students, they start lunch at ten o'clock and they go until two, so some of them are really hungry at that time, so we have a box meal. We don't do a hot meal. Um, we tried that in the past and that didn't work for us because students were not, some students were hungry at two-thirty, some weren't, so it was very difficult to maintain that. So we do a box meal and we leave it in a refrigerator and the coordinators can offer the students a meal when they, when they're hungry.
Okay, thank you. Um, my other comment, it's not really a question, but a comment, but you may respond. Um, when you're looking at the, the food services, the buses and things like that, we have similar, similar programs in our school, like the Culinary Academy and the automotives. Do you all, I guess I do have a question, do you all work with them to, you know, give them some hands-on training or opportunities to work with the different programs, like with the buses and the repairs and then preparing foods and things like that?
We, we do on a limited scale in our, in our cafeterias and so we would like some of those students as well and we've been trying to work with the academics portion, um, to maybe get some of those students in with the credit. So we have been, we looked at that and what are the legalities around that, um, in terms of that and will the students have transportation to get to our schools? So we're, we're open to that. That's, that's actually right in the buildings with them and if they need those credit, those credit hours, we're preparing meals every day and serving students.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's a great opportunity if you, if you're serving food to give the, the students the opportunity to do a real-life serving, um, plan, to have the kids doing the automotives, work on a school bus. I know that at, uh, Gwen Park, they do have some of the staff's cars come in and they make repairs, but, you know, in, in real life, they may end up going and working in, in a cafeteria for a school or at a bus, um, you know, repair location. So we have the buses, we need oil changed. I don't know if, uh, if we, if we could do that more often.
A slightly different take on your question. Uh, just so you know, we try to showcase our students as, as much as we can, given that we're not in the buildings teaching. Uh, but as an example, uh, I guess this has been about a month, month and a half ago, we hosted the, uh, LEA Facility Planner Meeting. It's a quarterly meeting that goes around the state and we hosted it at Oxon Hill High School. Uh, and what we did, we actually had the, um, string band, uh, there playing as people walked in, um, which was very impressive. We also had the culinary arts, uh, staff, not staff, but the students prepare the, um, the coffee and breakfast in the, in the morning as well as a full lunch that afternoon. And I have to say that, um, our colleagues from across the state were very impressed with that. So again, we try to make sure that we are showcasing the students, particularly whenever we can.
Round two, I have boroughs Musaria and Higgins. Mr. Burrow.
Mr. Stooks, uh, I do know the difference between, uh, security and safety.
[laughing]
I essentially put all night, all nighter last night working on a final research paper, so a little tired. Uh, but, uh, these questions are for, uh, food services?
Sure.
Can you describe, uh, your, your operation? So, uh, does every school have a kitchen where, um, or do we have some schools that, you know, the meals are propelled, prepared elsewhere and they're, uh, shipped in?
No, every school has a fully functioning kitchen.
And the?
And meals are prepared onsite and served onsite. Our procedures are that they batch cook so that we have, as the students are coming through the line and that's, we staff our kitchen, so we always have somebody who's cooking from, you know, throughout the whole period so that they're also replenishing at the same time.
Okay, thank you. Um, and also what is the, uh, percentage of minority business participation, uh, in the, the lunch program or the, you know, your, your department?
In minority business?
Yeah, so you, uh?
Our fruits, our procurement?
Yeah, and procurement.
Um, I'd say a hundred percent. Our, our, our major distributor is a minority, is, is, is part of the, um, the program, correct?
And are we operating in the black? I know a couple of years ago we were not.
Well, we're, we're close to, um, I think we, we had a year or so, um, that we were out. Um, I, I think part of the challenges of that is that the federal reimbursement is not keeping up with the cost, um, in this area. I am very much interested and I sit on a panel and I'm, I'm, uh, very strong, um, proponent of that and voice my opinion whenever I can with the members of Congress in terms of, um, locality price index. So the reimbursement rate that we receive, the two dollars and ninety-five cents, is the same reimbursement rate that a state in the south with lower costs, um, no labor contracts and so on and so forth are receiving. So they're able to, to manage, um, I guess, or, or provide more services because your labor costs or labor costs are high. So there's some things that we can control and we control the cost of our food, but once you're in this area, you start looking at gas prices and labor costs, so that translates to our distributors because they're paying their folks higher rate, wages as well. So across the board, all school districts across the board get the same reimbursement rate and it just doesn't work in this area.
Yeah, that makes perfect sense. I'd love to talk to you offline about that and also prove quality.
Absolutely.
Uh, is the safety officer is here. Um, you know, what's the process, uh, if a teacher or parent or administrator believes that, uh, there's asbestos, exposed asbestos, um, in a hallway, in a ceiling, in a classroom, what's the process, um, that, that your office, uh, goes through to fix the situation?
That's an excellent question. Um, the Asbestos Hazard Emergency Response Act nineteen eighty-two, federal law dictates exactly what we have to do. If a, uh, if a school reports suspected asbestos, we have a environmental inspector would go out there and they would pull samples, have them tested, uh, at a lab and then if it comes back positive, we follow all of the EPA, uh, protocol in removing that. Now, we, we do have, for example, in our older schools, floor tile, nine by nine inch square floor tile that does contain asbestos. It's non-friable asbestos, but we treat it all, uh, as a hazardous material following the, the proper EPA guidelines. Uh, and every, every reported incident is, is investigated. That actually doesn't come out of my office, it comes out of Mr. Belcher's office and, uh, William Dallas, our environmental office. Uh, so we do handle it with utmost urgency and precision.
Thank you.
Oh, I thought you were gonna, um, direct it to me. Okay, I have a question for the safety office. So I have received, uh, just a few complaints from student walkers because during, um, inclement weather like snow, the sidewalks sometimes are not cleared, so I wanted to know what is the allotted time for the, these sidewalks to be clear, cleared because from personal experiments, I mean, personal experience, I've seen it myself.
Right. Uh, it, it varies from jurisdiction to jurisdiction. With our school property, we clean it immediately. You know, that's part of our plow the driveways, clean off our sidewalks as soon as we can. We do that before opening. With a municipality, they may have a local ordinance that says everybody with sidewalks on road frontage has to have them cleared within twenty-four hours. Same with the county. Now, in a mega storm like we've had, it's often difficult for the citizen homeowner to, to meet those deadlines. You might have an elderly person with a lot of frontage, they plow it, long, or, excuse me, they shovel it, along comes a plow and throws it right back up on there. So there are times, especially this year, where we will have situations where the, the roads are not clear. Uh, the county enforces that, uh, we don't have the jurisdiction over that or the municipality would, uh, would enforce that. But we, we work closely with them and we let them know if our, our students are having a difficult time in a particular locality.
Yeah, and I think, um, in the future, like, um, once in a while when we have these storms, we should at least have inspections of the, the school property sidewalks because I've personally experienced having snow at least two inches, three inches high and students still have to walk on it to exit the property, I mean, on the sidewalk, so.
Understood and they, they do, the, they do perform those inspections. Uh, the facilities coordinators, uh, go out to the buildings and they try to make sure the buildings are adequately cleared before opening. Unfortunately, as I said, when, when the storms come one right after the other and the snow level is so high, it's often difficult to keep up, but we, we do our best to, to maintain those standards and certainly we would encourage any student or parent, if they, if they notice a deficiency, that they call either facilities or the safety office and we will address that as soon as humanly possible.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Higgins?
Yes, thank you. Um, huh, um, uh, for Ms. Shorter for, uh, food service. This is just a, um, a quick question. I understand that we can't do, uh, some of our schools because there are students up on the second floor. Is that?
Okay, so.
Am I accurate about that and?
Right, the, the state, um, through the Department of Education and the, and the state budget funds a program, the Maryland Meals for Achievement Classroom Breakfast, okay, I'm sorry. The Maryland, Maryland Meals for Achievement Classroom Breakfast Program. Within the law, it states that the meals must be in the classroom when the students arrive, which means the cafeteria staff needs to transport those meals to the classroom at least fifteen minutes before the students arrive. Some of those challenges we face are those schools with the second floor with no elevators, so we're not able to get the meals up to the second floor.
I, I know that Dr. Maxwell has talked about, um, maybe having the General Assembly revisit this issue.
Right. And so we're working with, um, and again, with, um, with Mr. Stooks and, and CIP, we're working together to look at the buildings, to see what the structures are, is there anything that can be done? So we're taking a look at that, but we're moving forward with breakfast in the classroom in, in most of our schools and so we've had some, some schools that have been, they've gotten volunteers to assist, but again, volunteers are not there every day, so we want to make sure that once we start a program, we can continue the program every day.
And I'm sure the General Assembly's intent was not to exclude children, but to try and...
Exactly, exactly. And, and I think part of what they're talking about, they said that the studies have proven that the meals that are in the classroom, if they're in the classroom when the students arrive, that the participation rates are higher, but we have another model as well for some of those schools that the students pick up, they're not funded through the Maryland Meals for Achievement Program, they're funded through Food Services, um, and the participation rates are consistent. So we do have data to show that, well, you know, there's no difference in the participation rate for either programs.
Okay, thank you very much.
Excuse me, colleagues, I'm, are you done? Okay, good. I'm going to respectfully ask that we, uh, at least temporarily suspend this discussion because I need to move on with my agenda or we will not have quorum. because I need to move on with my agenda, or we will not have quorum to take the action that we need to take in about 10 minutes. So without objection, I'm gonna suspend the rest of this discussion for now, go to our agenda items that will require board action, and then come back to finish this up. I still have a few folks on the list, at least one. So without objection, then we will move on to item 7.0 on the consent agenda, and yield the floor to Dr. Davis for an introduction of consent agenda items 7.1 and 7.2.
Thank you, Dr. Eubanks. Item 7.1 and 7.2 are before the Board for approval of proclamations commemorating the following in Prince George's County Public Schools: National Asian Pacific American Month, May 2014, and National Caribbean American Heritage Month, June 2014.
Ladies and gentlemen, may I have a motion?
Still moved.
Seconded.
It has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Parker, please call the roll.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Mr. Burrows.
Aye.
Ms. Epps. Ms. Eubanks?
Aye.
Ms. Higgins?
Aye.
Ms. Monday?
Aye.
Mr. Valentine?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Ms. Musaria?
Aye.
Ms. Boston? Dr. Eubanks?
Aye.
Ten ayes.
Thank you, that motion carries. Colleagues, we now move on to 8.0 Budget Consent Agenda, and I'll yield the floor again to Dr. Davis for an introduction of Budget Consent Agenda Items 8.1 and 8.2.
Thank you. Items 8.1 and 8.2 are before the Board for approval of the following: For year 2014 appropriation reassignments over $100,000. And for for-year 2014 substitute, part-time, and temporary, non-benefit-eligible employees, 2% cost of living increase.
Still moved.
It has been moved and seconded to adopt these Budget Consent Agenda items. Seeing no discussion, Ms. Parker, please call the roll.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Mr. Burrows?
Aye.
Ms. Eubanks?
Aye.
Ms. Higgins?
Aye.
Ms. Monday?
Aye.
Mr. Valentine?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Ms. Boston?
Aye.
Dr. Eubanks?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Nine ayes, that motion carries, thank you. No, there are no non-consent agenda items. 10.0 is government, governance unfinished business, second readers. I should note that item 10.2 on unfinished businesses is moot. But I do want to call Mr. Toler up from Imagine Leland, or at least have him stand for a second. This item is no longer on the agenda. It has been pulled because Imagine Leland is in active negotiations now at their current location with what I understand to be very promising results, that Imagine Leland will in fact stay at their current location, correct? I've asked Mr. Leland one to, I mean, Mr. Toler, Mr. Leland from Toler, Imagine, just to stand up, sir, probably, I don't think I've ever gotten more emails and phone calls than the last discussion that we had at the Board for myself personally. And, but I want to thank you personally for your responsiveness to parents. I understand you've been in regular contact with your parents, they've been engaged with the process, and for really listening to the Board and working hard to seek resolution on behalf of the children and family, family at Leland. And so with that, you have a question, Mr. Burrows?
Yes.
Yes.
Dr. Davis, you know, one of the major reasons that the administration presented to the Board for the need for the relocation was the lack of IT access for the upcoming tests. Has that issue been resolved, or is that kind of still up in the air?
Mr. Toler, I'm not sure if you wanted to address it, but when they did do the renegotiations with the Vestry, it was with the understanding that they had to come up to par with the technology. And Mr. Toler will be able to expand upon that.
Yes, we are currently conducting formal assessments for that to happen. The conversation with the Vestry has been that they are agreeing to partner with us to rectify that situation. So we do have a very promising quote on the table from Comcast that is going to address that need. And again, the Vestry has agreed to assist with that.
And I'll be clear, obviously, if something happens, you know, any other action would come back to the Board. But clearly, we would have a site that's gonna take care of all of the needs of the school and their students, correct?
Yes.
All right, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, thank you.
I'll now yield the floor to Dr. Davis for an introduction of Governance Unfinished Business Agenda Items 10.1 and 10.3.
Items 10.1 and 10.3 are before the Board for approval of the following: A three-year contract for Oracle North American Software and Oracle Consulting Services effective July 1st, 2014, and completer textbook adoption for career research and development to 12th grade.
Mr. Chair?
We have a question before a motion, yes. Dr. Anderson?
I have a question, I was going to place a motion.
You're gonna place a motion, please do.
I move the approval of items 10, 1, and 10, 3, and note that 10, 3 has a very complete Board summary action. Thank you very much.
It has been moved and seconded for a very complete agenda item. Thank you very much. All right, it has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Parker, please call the roll.
Dr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Burrows?
Aye.
Ms. Eubanks?
Aye.
Ms. Higgins?
Aye.
Ms. Monday?
Aye.
Mr. Valentine?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Ms. Boston?
Aye.
Dr. Eubanks?
Aye.
Nine. Nine ayes.
Nine ayes, that motion carries, thank you very much. Colleagues, we have no, one more. No new business and no public comments. Follow-up items are for March 13, 2014, and March 27, Board Meeting, are posted in Board Docs. Colleagues, we'll move on to item 14.1 and entertain a motion to confirm actions taken in executive session- So moved. On Thursday, April 10th, night. It has been moved and seconded. To hereby approve actions taken in executive session on April 10, 2014, and as follows: Personnel appointments, employee appeals, student appeals, legal matters, and administrative matters. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That motion carries. The colleagues, I know some of our colleagues have to go, we're not adjourned quite yet, because I want to go back and revisit item 6.2. We were in the middle of that discussion. I want to make sure everyone's questions get answered. Ms. Monday, you're up.
Thank you. This question was regarding transportation and and how the transportation office partners with the school when there are delays in morning or in the evening with regard to picking up students. I know that if a bus, well, I'll let you speak to it, but if there is an instance where a bus is running late, are the parents of the students that are affected contacted? And I don't know if that's a school-level thing or a bus issue, but that's one question. My second question is regarding a contact that I've gotten from parents regarding, if a bus is late and that parent decides to instead wait for the bus to take the student, they don't get the benefit of the tardy because they didn't, they opted out of coming through the bus. Does that make sense? And how is that mitigated? And I've had that happen on a number of occasions, where the student's academic record is showing a late when the parent just decided to, "I'll drop you" instead of waiting another five minutes for this bus that's late. Try to explain that the bus is late and the staff at the school level. And so how is that, you know, coordinated with the school?
Okay, whenever students, when a bus is late in the afternoon and students or parents need to be contacted, currently, we don't have a way of contacting all of our parents. So what we do is we contact the schools to make sure that they're aware, so that they can use their calling system to alert parents. However, we have discussed an initiative that was used in another school system that I worked for, where we had a robo-calling system, and we had it set up by bus route, so that we could initiate those calls whenever a bus was late. So we would have a prerecorded message that stated that your bus is gonna be late.
And this is coming directly from transportation? So in that way, you're not relying on the school to do that?
That's an initiative that we're gonna pursue. So right now, I mean, that's one of our areas of opportunity for the future. But currently, we work with the school.
Okay, and I think that would be great, because that would then also solve the issue with a parent opting to just take them, and they being marked tardy when they just decided not to wait for the bus, and the school isn't dealing with it.
Yeah, and as we find out that there may be issues where they are marked tardy, we can also work with the school and confirm with them that, yes, indeed, the bus was late.
Okay, thank you.
All set? I see no other questions or speakers on this issue, is that correct? All right, seeing none, that concludes this presentation. Thank you, folks, very much again, for all your great work. And unlike your finance folks, I think you should just send your staff home for the day. I mean, there's no reason at all that they should go back to the office. That's just me saying, I'm... All right, ladies and gentlemen, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. It has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Ladies and gentlemen, we are adjourned until our next meeting on April 24th. Have a great day.